Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the meeting of the Southfield City Council for Monday, May 6, 2013. And this meeting is being conducted at the State Building. Ms. Banks, would you take the role?
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
She's present, she's upstairs.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Ferliniak?
Yes.
Mr. Grazer?
Here.
Mr. Fertiale?
Here.
Mr. George?
Here.
You're seven members present.
We are going to try to keep this meeting to an hour. This portion of our agenda, rather, to an hour. So I'm going to start right away. We have two preliminary reviews for possible new developments. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crowe, our planner.
Thank you, through the chair. We've asked two potential applicants to come before council. These ideas are a little novel. And we wanted to have the council give some preliminary feedback before they submit an official site plan. Our first development is Norwood Commons. It's a proposed cluster residential development. Michael Loveland and his team are here to present. Five to 10 minutes, and then we'll take some questions from council. So I'd like to invite them to come up. And then after that, we have two proposals for the Edward Southfield site.
I'm the owner of the property, 20191 South Norwood, Cary Street, Hunslope. We're in the process of in the process of restoring the property every month since I've been here. And we're in the process of reselling the greenhouse to three staff. We put together a cluster development of five units of homes that we would like to put together here at the Norwood. Norwood, as you said, is a developer's business. I personally think that's a new idea.
Anybody here back there?
Very well.
No.
My name's Kerry Gettree. And I'm part of the team. I'm a retail developer, local developer.
Actually, if you'd like, have a seat over there. Speaking of that microphone, we don't need the podium, it's awkward anyhow.
These are working. Testing, these are working.
Anyone of those microphones here, you'll be fine.
Hey, my name's Kerry Gettree. That's G.I.T.R.E. And I'm with Landis Development. We teamed up with Mike.
We need your business address for the rest of the work.
150 North Cranbrook, Bloomfield Village. We've teamed up and we've retained an architect that I worked with on several properties in the area to do a study on the redevelopment of this boutique parcel property that's mostly been undeveloped on Norwood. And we've looked at some exciting new concepts that have been implemented in other areas of the country, namely in the Seattle area and in Oregon and California. There have been several new developments that have incorporated this boutique style cluster homes. And the idea is to, they're called pocket neighborhoods. And where you, where the size of the home is not really the focus, it's the connectivity, the balance between open space and the residential and the common sharing uses. In other words, I'll let Andrew Donner explain the program, what his concept is. With that, but we've got three elements here. We've got a greenhouse, nursery onsite, we've got open space for community gardening, and we've got an area for residential component. The space incorporates parking, but in a unique way in that you don't necessarily drive to your unit and park your car and go inside. There's common space restricted for parking in the center court. There are also two pods in this development, roughly 12 units in each pod. And the studies and what the experts have found is that no more than 12 units, if you get any more than 12 units in a particular pod, the news gets us a feel as far as the human aspects and the sharing of accounting spaces and the neighborly interactions that we're finding. Our designs were inspired by a fellow by the name of Ross Chapin. And if you care to look at his website, rosschapin.com, you can see some of the other developments that they've done successfully. And they've been able to pave the way with communities that whereby the existing ordinance didn't really permit this type of development with setbacks. And they're more urban refill, urban backfill type sites. So they've been able to successfully work with communities like Southfield to, you know, work together, and that's why we're here, is really to ask for, first off, to share the ideas, but if you see, get any feedback, you may have questions. And then see if we can together work in developing a plan that may satisfy our needs and the needs of the community. So it's a hot concept. It's a very low scale, low impact, something we're very excited to be a part of. So with that, Andy, do you have anything?
Yeah, the units themselves are meant to be under 1,000 square feet. These aren't large scale houses. The homes themselves will have covered front porches. Materials will be high sustainable materials, will be local materials. We're not doing aluminum sided houses. We're doing probably wood flat houses with metal roofs. All materials will be long lasting. There's ideas and principles behind it that will be elite type quality. We're not necessarily chasing after the LEED certification right now, but materials themselves, low consumption fixtures, spray water collection, used for irrigation, possibly some solar, maybe even some wind generation, we're not positive yet at this point. But the idea is that this would be environmentally friendly, sustainable type development. Lockable.
Anything else, gentlemen? Or Mr. Planner?
Just wanted to mention, we think this would sit under our usual cluster residential development. So let's figure this into the scheme. Again, it's just whether or not the council finds the use eligible to move forward to the next step.
This is something very, very different, obviously, than anything we have in our housing inventory. And personally, I was very excited when I saw you proposing. So, Mr. Lance, you've asked to, you have a question or say something?
I have a few questions. Where are you building this? Do you have a call?
It's on. Where is the lot? Where are you building it?
It's 20191 South Norwood. Currently Cary's greenhouse is on the site, and that's in the process of restoring it. And there's almost three and a half acres of vacant land to the west.
I thought the garden, I thought it was sold to a fellow who's developing a garden there.
It's, I'm the same person. Yes, sir.
What's his name?
Michael Loveland.
And you bought the whole lot and you're developing it as a garden?
Yes, sir.
A nursery, rather?
Yes, sir. That's part of the development. On the east side, we'd like to preserve the greenhouse and also give some community gardening space for the residents.
Okay.
And integrate it as a whole community.
What is the square foot of the residence?
The proposed houses are approximately just under 1,000 square feet with the ability to add some space upwards from one, to target maybe senior citizens on a single story or students at Lawrence Tech so that they can cohabitate in a new and existing home that consumes less energy and is also fit that market segment that there currently is in a lot of homes available in this market. We feel that there's a difference.
What's the size of the house? What's a square foot inside?
850 square feet.
What's the price of this home?
We haven't gotten the final number, but it'll be in the middle $100,000 range.
And the size of the lot?
Well, currently we're trying to work with a cluster development option which allows it to be around 9,500 square feet, up to 11,000 square feet. But we're trying to stay in the low end.
Each house will be on 900 square feet?
Here are the units here. You can see each lot is about 10,000 square feet roughly. And then the unit within that would be about 900 square feet per house.
If I could, through the chair. This is a communal living, so there's common area, but the average would be about 11,000 square feet per unit. If you combine all the common elements, you said this will have about four and a half acres. How many rooms?
It'd be two bedrooms.
Oh, all two bedroom?
Well, it was an option of three, but designed as two, perhaps three at least.
Three bedrooms and an 850 square foot building?
The three bedroom unit would be about 1,100 square feet.
They'll be closets. They'll be small.
The intent is, is a two bedroom, one bath unit will be about 850 square feet. If you increase the size to three bedrooms, the size of the home will move to about 1,100 square feet. There'll be an open floor plan with open layouts for living space, which you can see in some concepts here of what's been done in the past.
What size would a bedroom be for a two bedroom house?
10 by 12.
10 by 12, it'll be an ordinary size.
14.
How about the kitchen?
The kitchen will be integrated to the living space. So probably, you know, 10 by 10, but it'll fill into an open floor plan as the trend for the living.
What will they sell for?
As much as possible. Depending on the location.
That's the wrong answer, you know that.
Well, it's the right answer from my perspective, but in the, about $100,000 range.
How much?
About $100,000. Somewhere in that area.
You mentioned something about the quality of the material. I hope it's very quality material.
Oh, yeah. That will be. We're talking about metal roofs. These are 50 year lifespan roofs. We're not doing any asphalt, no vinyl siding. It'll all be long lasting, low maintenance materials is the goal. I think our price range is probably in the 140 ish range, really, in reality, when we talk about these kind of materials and some of the supplements that would be involved. But again, as we move into this, the goal is that most of the living of these units happens outside of the house. It happens on the front porch. It happens in some of the common community type buildings which are in the neighborhood. So there's shared facilities that will be.
I hope it doesn't mean too much.
I think in this environment, we all enjoy our backyard. We all live in communities. We hope that people move outside of their houses. The goal is to get people to know their neighbors and it becomes self security measures where if you know your neighbors, you see this coming into development, the goals are safety, walkability, and low energy. So those are aspects that will be part of the play and setting the value of the houses. And hopefully, it's taking people from a lower end affordable type housing, but a higher end community, if that makes sense. Instead of moving to like a Royal Oak or one of these other communities who are doing these types of developments, we'd like to keep it here and make it affordable for people.
The roads are going to be paved?
No. The roads will be, at this point, some sort of permeable material, whether it's grass papers or something of the light, but our hope is that the roads aren't your typical road. It would be areas where it could have a tool purpose, where there isn't cars navigating them, you know, people could use them for community type events or throwing a frisbee around or doing something beyond just driving a car. And when we talk about roads, we mean the ones internal as camps. Obviously, the ones along Norwood and say Norwood, but our hope is to develop some sidewalks along Norwood. Currently, there's no sidewalks. And then connect this development out onto Evergreen Road.
With some side road. And you said, you can tell me what the roads, or is it a house?
It'll be some sort of paper, a paper of some type. It could be a sand pancake and then it will be a higher road.
The goal of the development is to have the least impact on the environment as possible so that we can.
How about the impact on cars? Will they hold up?
The amount of traffic that will be seen in the area of development.
The overall cost of car?
We have, we have one covered space per unit right now, and then there's one space dedicated for visitors. So there's two parking spaces, one is covered, one is not.
Is it a car park?
Kind of like an apartment. In an apartment building, you park your car and then you come in and a car park.
It'll have a door out of the, in a resort. And the garages themselves will be the same material as the house, so it'll look very much like the rest of the road.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mr. Moss.
Yeah, this is a creative concept. Are there others that you've been involved with in the development around this metro area that we can look at, kind of, and see its implementation now?
This is the first one.
Okay. Would you consider, you know, if this is successful, this creates a good living space, would you consider expanding it, either onsite or elsewhere in the city, if there's other land? We're trying to kind of create a densely developed area. It's really close by, it's a city center, Evergreen and Civic Center Drive, and I think this kind of would fit that concept. Is it something that, you know, we can work on, you know, moving forward to kind of help you continue and we'll bring new residents to Southfield and you guys can keep the development?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And one of the things about the greenhouse that's interesting is the greenhouse will be year round. We're going to use different concepts with earth tubes and, you know, geothermal to keep that, where we're going to grow 365 days a year. And there's also possibility to have benches and other things that we're going to be doing. We're working with a company that's local, Livonia Aqua Growers, that grows the fish in water, or you know, grow fish in water that supports the plants. And so ideally, this will provide food for all the residents and for others. And that provides, you know, limitless, I guess, and improves the quality of life for all the residents in the community and in the development itself.
Okay, great. Yeah, you said also about tying it into students with Lawrence Tech, and I think that's something that if you haven't initiated that partnership already, and they're growing campus, and I think that this would fit into the needs of their housing stock, too. I know we have, kind of, sometimes we play referee between the residents who live near Lawrence Tech and their need to expand student living. I think that this is kind of a happy medium, you know. It helps them expand housing options for their students without maybe disrupting the serenity of surrounding neighborhoods. So I would encourage you to definitely reach out to Lawrence Tech if you haven't already and see if there's options on their land or on nearby land to kind of bring this elsewhere in the city.
Mr. Seymour?
You're the owner, correct? You're not related, are you? You're the owner, you bought the, you bought the farm of what's in Cary. You bought, you bought the three and a half acres, am I right?
Yeah, well, there's in total nearly five acres, 4.75, which includes the house and the greenhouse to the east. And then we're proposing a development on the.
Okay, did you buy it all? Did you buy it all?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're the developer?
I'm the owner, and I had the idea, and I brought in some resources to help me that are more experienced.
So my question is, if the, I don't know if they'll sell or not. I mean, I don't think they like the rustic ones, because you've got some that look more like they've been into the urban environment from what I see in the illustrations. Once they're developed, should they let somebody have to sell them? Should we hire a realtor or have a realtor involved or not?
Well, it's about whether you're a realtor.
Oh, you are?
As well.
Well, what I'm getting, here's what I'm getting at, let's put the bottom line. If they don't sell, and I don't know if they will, if they don't sell, I don't want to see any of them go to rental. That would, that would not be something I'd want to see. How do we, will it be built, will it be built as they're sold, or will it be have a model that should be, couple of models that should be showing so that people will buy them before they're built, or will they be built and then you help sell them?
Well, ideally, I'll have some input through the life of the project as I'm very passionate about how this, how it comes about and has been, the way that it looks and it's maintained.
Mr. Loveland, you're living on the site, correct? In the house?
Not full time, but I have time. I spend a lot of time there. You'll see me often there, working on the greenhouse or on the grounds or, you know.
But you don't live there, but you're spending a lot of time there.
Correct.
But my point is, are we just going to build ahead of time and then try to be sold or even have a model that you're going to?
Yeah, we would have a model and we would not build to spec.
That's what I'm hoping.
But they may be leased if we were to have a partnership with Lawrence Tech or another facility, or you say, and somebody wanted a long term lease to satisfy students, we would, we would do that.
Okay, but if that doesn't happen, if it's just, you know, anybody that could move in, what I don't want to see, I mean, I'm hoping you would build as they purchase. Because if you build them all and they don't sell, then what happens?
We're not in any hurry to make a mistake, either. And the fellows on, and the people that have done these developments have pre-sold most of the units before the completion of the development. That there really is a high demand for these. They're very unique, very economical, kind of a cool thing that you just can't get. So there's more people that would want these that are available.
I'm not, I, you know, I see the traction in this. I can see that it could be a nice little community and it would be nice for people that are retiring, where people have just one downside. I can see all that. There's, some of them I don't like, but some of them are very attractive, and you're showing this different example. Some of them fit into not our environment, but some of them fit into a more elastic environment. I get all that. I just don't want to see houses built that are speculative and then we end up with rentals because we have enough problems with that right now. I want to make sure that.
Thank you. Good point. All right, Mr. Fertiale?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think this is the most exciting thing that comes to Southfield. This hasn't been, it isn't new. It was back in, I think Builders Journal back in 2001 where the concept took place and you've seen, you know, the porch community being up there, 30 mile and ladder, Mr. Jensen Bell up there. And what this would do, you know, and I know we're having a vision later on, but we have Phoenix here, Central here, LTU here, we have OCC here. You talk about whether Southfield is going to be, and, you know, off the wall, they say, you know, about time we became a cool city. And, you know, I'm not another young man, but still saying, you know, that's the end thing, is become a cool city. And the, you know, Harbor Springs has had this development up there and it's doing very well. I did some, I have a good friend that builds unique developments and we had a meeting when I seen this on our agenda. And, you know, it's really great because you have Bay Street cottages that was up in Good Hill City. I don't know if you've seen that. It's just really neat places. And then you have what they call the Cottage at Water Edge, that's up the Crystal Mountain. And this is really a concept that, you know, never took off in the early years, 2000, 2001 for some reason, but today's market, you know, they're talking about lots and things that young people are moving into. Wall Street Journal just had, just had a big article, you know, student green homes just this last week. So, you know, in fact, they had another, who was this from that? This was that Trailside Cabin, it's Crystal Mountain. So, so when I seen this, I got excited because, you know, we've been known for a lot of things. We have a large amount of office space in the city. We have, you know, just quite an assortment of young people who, whether it be office, Uber's, technology, brains, whatever have you, that, that like this concept. And I not only see this concept taking hold, but maybe someone else will come in, or you would come in and even build more of them because, you know, if anything you read today is kind of foreign to what I have seen in the past, you know, in building, you know, two story colonial or ranch or whatever, but new living that's seen in building magazines and all over, you know, they're coming off the wall with all these different ideas. And I really think this is exciting. We'd be the first, to mine outside of Harbor Springs to have this development in this city. And I think it brings a lot to a community by having an assortment of housing. But, you know, I just think that one of the things we should really be looking at as a city is that, you know, we have some good universities here, and I'd like to see them expand with students. And then they'll be looking at housing, and they want to be different than what they buy and what they like. So when I see this, anyway, I thought this was very exciting. I'd like to see this go forward in some respect and.
Mr. Lance?
Thank you. Shut your mouth for it.
Well, leaving an eye on the clock.
I don't care about the clock, this is important. I mean, I'm sorry, but, I mean, I know you're the president, but.
Mr. Lance?
Okay, no, seriously, Ken, I mean, I don't think this issue being cut off, seriously.
I hate to say it, but this type of development will ruin our tax space, will ruin all the condos around you. It'll bring the prices down. It'll be a dreamland, as you have, a dreamland, little cottage community which will affect all our spaces in the city. Nobody thought of that. Nobody thought of that.
We've thought a lot about tax space.
Well, why do you care about the tax space? As long as you build your own.
We know that we can develop 13 or 11 units on this property right now. Probably at the same tax.
I have the floor. It will ruin the tax space for all the surrounding condos within three or four miles of your developments. Prices will be down. If they can buy houses at 140,000 and all those people around here spend 200, 300,000 dollars for their condos, what's going to happen to them? Another depression? Come on, can you?
I'm not excited the other way. I'm not excited.
Where do we keep this moving?
As I can mention, there's cottage zoning, cottage housing. It's a tax pay.
And the tax base, answer that.
There are none surrounding though. All right, next, uh, Ms. Jordan.
Condos all around them.
Ms. Jordan.
I need to go.
Yes.
You know, if you have an opportunity to give a plan and give a discussion, I think it's a pretty exciting project, Southfield. I actually believe, uh, I have to respectfully disagree with my colleague, I think we're going to add to our tax base.
And add, you don't think they'll bring down tax?
Absolutely not, this is going to be a new project in Southfield, it's going to put us, it's going to keep us on the map. And I think we've got to think outside the box and do something differently in terms of the residential.
Mr. Lance, please.
No, I don't mind having this, this discussion with him, but I think it's a great project, I think it's an exciting project for the city of Southfield. My only concern is that you have an aggressive marketing plan to make sure that the whole Southfield, uh, I agree with Joan, I don't want to see them, uh, built and then we have to backfill them with tenants. But I think it's going to be great for the city of Southfield, and so I am with, with that project.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
Yes, um, when you look at the, uh, sketch, uh, the existing greenhouses on the east end, how far west does your property run? Does it run beyond the stand of the pines that are there or?
Uh, right, right to the edge of the mansion.
Yes, it does.
Is it beyond the, beyond the?
Stand of the pines that are. Pines that are on the property, the existing stem, my neighbor's in the west, Jim, I think is his name, I talked to him on the right of the bank, I'm trying to get.
Now, does that mean you're going to, or cut the?
We're going to try to leave as many trees in tax as possible.
Okay, I, I, I would hope so because that adds to the ambiance of the area, gives a kind of a rural feeling.
Now, is there water down there?
There, yes, there is water currently to all of the residents, the.
I thought there was a fire hydrant.
There's a fire hydrant there, the, the home, the Norwood property is still on an existing well, where the tax fee was not paid by the previous owner. And as this development moves forward, that's another thing that we would provide that tax fee. Since I have nearly eight hundred feet along Norwood Road, I was quoted an eleven or twelve thousand dollar tax fee plus all of the materials and work to do the job. So I'd be delighted to do it as a single-family homeowner, but if we do the development, we pay the tax fee and break city water, we have city sewer now.
There is city sewer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that this goes through, that the, uh, the water feed is adequate for the additional buildings that you're going to put on there. So, um, I see our, the public works guy shaking his head, yes, it's, it should be okay. Uh, I'm also excited about this, I think, uh, this is something that's completely different than what we've done before. Uh, and if we're going to survive as a, a city where people will be attracted to our community, we've got to do something different than we've always done. Because we always do what we've always done, we always give what we always got. And, um, uh, so I, I also agree with this, in fact, I was down there this evening, saw deer. And they aren't great people, you know, you know. So, now, a question about, you said that, that you're going to be growing things, greenhouse taller on?
Yes, sir.
Now, is this commercially or just for the, the people that will purchase the homes?
It'll probably be both, I have an idea for, like a door-to-door kind of natural food delivery system, so there won't be a lot of traffic to the greenhouse. I, I spoke with the neighbors, they'd like to mitigate traffic, because I am allowed currently under the existing use, to use the greenhouse in the retail space that's there. But we would try to, out of respect to the neighbors, we're going to try to, like, deliver that off-site, it's one of the ideas, but the food will be available to all residents, um, it'll be available at the farmer's market. I have a chance to contribute to the health of farmer's market and then also just in delivering the homes, uh, as we can.
Now, um, I have a question about the covered space for the automobile. Um, okay, um, we have just gone through a description for our ordinance on garages versus carports. And I heard somebody say that this is sort of like being in a, uh, if you rent in the apartment.
But it has a door in?
Yeah, it won't be like a carport, it'll, it'll actually be a garage where, it'll have a door, it'll be lockable, um, there's, uh, storage adjacent to the garages themselves for also lockability of bicycles and anything else that someone might store in a garage. Uh, by moving some of those items outside of the car garage proper, we're able to shrink down the garage some, so it's basically large enough for the biggest SUV we can fit in it right now.
Okay.
Um, and really, that's about it, it's going to be placey park, that's it.
Okay, uh, and I'm sure that the, uh, planning commission will make you very aware of what our ordinances are about outside storage and, and, um, because we've just gone through that and we're trying to upgrade that, but I just break the news, so, um, that's, that's it.
Thank you, um, Ms. Jordan.
I have a question. Because, because there's so many different styles that are offered. Do you have a development on one of these type of homes that you're mainly more toward?
It'll be more modern, um, some of those images you're seeing there aren't necessarily just for the house, it's more for the landscaping and sight front of it you're seeing there. And we're so early on that those are just ideas right now. Um, we see this building as being a relatively simple, um, when I say facility, I mean the dwelling unit, it'll be relatively simple, we're not talking steep roof, it might be more like shed roof. Um, with simple materials, um, contemporary, um, not, it's, it's the cottage look that you see in some of them, I think is more, um, because of the units that we're seeing are from northern-type facilities, so the dark sector's a little bit different there. I think being in Southfield, it'll, it'll, the materials will want to fit into your, what's going on right now.
Okay, so my, my question is, because you mentioned, someone mentioned adolescents and then we mentioned college students, and you know their clocks are different. And I love the common space, which would encourage, I can just see it, this is for college students, they're playing frisbee, they're sitting out at night on bonfires, seniors are trying to go to bed. So, if you're going to market this as a senior area, I would be concerned if you're going to also leave that we just went through some very, um, concerning conversation of trying to mix family life and college life together. Neither are wrong, but they have their right to their quality of life, so what is the plan?
So you're still open, we're really having thoroughly about to do that here, but it's a good point, we'll take into consideration on how.
Because we have some transcripts to show you.
I'm making this, I'm making this, thank you.
And, and the other thing is, um, so each of these units will have a garage. The outdoor parking, some are shaded yellow and others are clear, can you tell me what, what makes those parking spaces different?
What's shaded yellow right now are what we're calling garage, um, the other ones are literally on grayed parking, uh, sort of, so.
So, so these would not be connected garages, these will be unconnected garages, is that correct?
Correct.
So if I bought one of these units, my, if I were to park my car in a garage, it would be in the yellow unit and I have to walk over to my unit to ride it?
Yes, ma'am, that's the, the concept, it also has to lay out to, to, to utilize the space as efficiently as possible.
Is there any, um, any kind of making it stated?
Do you think communities have positive aspects and negative aspects? I think being where it's positioned in Southfield with the large forested areas on the north of us, close to the church, we'd like this thing to be open to everyone. That's why we haven't targeted the audience to seniors or college students, uh, the hope is professional people and whatever that means. College students today aren't just people that look like me, they're people that look like you, there's people who've been laid off. So, college student, I think in today's world is different than what it had been in college.
Adults, adults.
Everyone from, versus eighteen to fifty-eight, so, our goal would be to attract professional people who are looking for this kind of community, we're not, we're not developing a mobile or, or something like that. Trying to keep it upscale enough that it promotes people to want to be in it, uh, that are living like that.
So you have two of those rooms, right?
Um, those are, those are yard community buildings, so those would be, um, a place for being out, talking to somebody, a place that they could rent out for.
Those are stairs, Luke?
These ones here. These two are.
Okay. And so what's the one that looks like a, uh, forty-five, the gold with the red dot?
That's the.
No, next to one of those.
That area would be the exterior common gathering area, this area would be partially covered, um, as part of the unit itself, but it might be a place where, um, it's accessible by ordinance where we have a built-in wire system. Uh, we haven't gotten far enough into that to see what that means, but it would be something where, um, a more exterior gathering.
Like a common barbecue area for gathering, and there are two of them because, as I said at the beginning, there are twelve units, no more than twelve per pod, so there are really two pods here. And we anticipate basing this, if we were to do the first pod, first bid, would be next to the, for the interior.
Yeah, it would be packaged to be delivered to this site as units of twelve beds, so, there was talk earlier as how it would be split up, we wouldn't build out all sixteen or eighteen, whatever it ends up being, um, units, it would be.
One completely pod and then.
And then we begin with that problem.
And just one thing that I would ask this to do your diligence, is that you have a clear sense of the amount of appraised property, because I know this is new construction. And we don't want you building and then saying, oh, wait a minute, it's not selling the way we want, we want you to go in with clearance, Sammy. Do you base these things on a hundred and twenty?
We'll know for sure once we've figured out what all the rest of the menus are, because each house, you're not just buying a house on a piece of land, you're buying a lifestyle, you're buying, you know, your buildings, you're buying parts of the greenhouse, so I mean, these all things will come into play when it comes to how the car is going to.
Yeah, I'm curious to see what type of home and, and to really be, I want you to be confident, I think you're a positive person, right?
Um, I would, I'd like to interject here, this, again, this is a niche. Uh, if you want an attached garage, you would buy a condo with attached garage, but this is, but I see the people coming to this that are, um, that are into organic gardening, organic food, uh, growing their own things, they, they like green, they like the environment. Uh, remember you have Dunn Scotus Woods right, uh, right there, um, uh, it's a rather rural place, isn't in the heart of the city. Um, it is totally a niche and, and it should be looked at with a different perspective than the other condos, every other condo project we've built in this town, uh, over the last twenty, thirty years. Uh, Mr. Grove, you wanted to interject?
Yeah, I do want to interject. To the chair, I was just going to interject basically what you said, just a pertinent perspective. We have about thirty-five thousand residential units, both owner-occupied and rental in this community. We're talking about eighteen units of a niche that's going to be marketed to environmentally aware and sustainable, uh, adolescents, young professionals. I think the age group doesn't matter as much, it's about the passion for this type of development. And I, I believe that this will not only do well in Southfield, but it will attract regional attention. So I, I just wanted to put in perspective, the purpose tonight was introduce the concept, see if there's least consensus from the council to move forward. We definitely will have to take this to the process, it'll be a lot more work out there. Uh, and that's all I wanted to just kind of summarize the good discussion we've got here.
All right, I, I, I want to give everybody a fair chance, but I want to remind everybody that we have, um, staff here and we have a vision extension. And this is not the be-all and end-all of this discussion, so please keep that in mind, and I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but, um, this was just to introduce the concept. We want to give these gentlemen, uh, either a red light or a green light, uh, uh, so that they can, uh, continue their planning and come back to it. Um, so, Ms. Jordan, you had another question, and that is.
I'm assuming the parents have a farmer's market, if it is Southfield, they're not have a farmer's market, so this will be open to the general public.
That would be the home?
Okay, that's good, that's all I wanted to say.
And people are stopping asking when it's, you know, open, and I've cleared the dotted, I don't know if you saw it last fall before I purchased it, but the greenhouse is going to be overgrown, it's in the right, just like the lapid had, the roof was falling out of the hole. And I've invested, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to restore the property to, uh, to remove, to be an eyesore, to be an asset of the community. Uh, people stop in their cars and ask me when, and I even have stuff for sale.
Um, Ms. Ms. Seymour.
Thank you, um, the farmer's market, I just want to add, we, we did have farmer's market and it just didn't do well and it's gone, so, forget that, you have to have your own, that area. I mean, that area should become the farmer's market area for Southfield, it really should be. It was at one time, there were two or three of them and it was at one time and it's been again.
Yeah, the, the property originally had green houses in the twenties, from the Benningford family, it had a long history.
I know that, I've been here a long time, I'm not that long, but I've been here a long time. Um, one of the things, one of the reasons, like, I, some of these look like cabins that belong in the Northwoods and I'm, I'm sure you know that, these are just ideas, and we don't want it to look that rustic. But, uh, one of the problems about having a big green space like this and about having young children or teenagers, we have a park up on the north, northeast corner of our city. We're, uh, surround, the park that kids played, older kids played, surrounded by homes, and the neighbors just went bananas because of so much noise from the, you know, right across the very narrow local street. And this kind of a thing, to me, you have to be careful who moves in there because we had a lot of teenagers, a lot of kids, it's going to drive the neighbors crazy, so. The marketing has to be, I think, targeted, it either has to be all college kids or, well, it has to be controlled because it can get out of hand. I like the concept and, and that area because it is semi-rural, but I'm, like, uh, Ms. Cyrus, we have a lot of, uh, ways to go yet to get site plan approval and you're going to get, you're going to find out how tough we can be, but I like the concept.
All right, and last word, Mr. Lance.
I don't just want to see the idea, but not here. At what cost, at what cost are we going to allow this to be done here? I'd like to ask the assessor, the assessor's here tonight.
Should I ask him a question?
He stepped out. He stepped out.
I saw him before.
He was here, he just stepped out a minute ago.
I wanted an answer from the assessor on the, on the balance of the taxes from, from this, from this community to all the others, and what will happen to all the.
It's going to be terrific, it's going to be.
It will not, it will lower, it will deteriorate our tax base in that area. I'll tell you, I'll give you an example, the Orthodox community that we have, people moving in and taxes are going up to them, high-priced houses now, not cabins, not cottages like this. In ten years, these won't be worth five thousand dollars. Deterioration with the material you would have put in there, but I would want to ask the assessor his opinion on what will happen to the tax base if this is built around. Did you hear what they're trying to do?
All right, Mr. T. J. Ryan, Mr. Lance maintains that this would, I'm helping explain, that, that, he believes that this project will, uh, be a negative to the tax base, so he's asking your opinion.
Wait a minute, you know what they're going to sell them for?
A hundred, hundred and forty thousand?
Hundred and twenty, hundred and forty, okay, and all the condos around, you know what they, what they were bought for, and how much more are they going to go down once this little community is going to be built there? Will, will it have an effect upon the surrounding condos?
Uh, I, I think this, uh, city of Southfield and the whole general area suffered immensely in the last five years and everything else is coming back up. And I'm thinking, is this, uh, is, is, I don't think there's any more detrimental things happening in this city.
But it will be detrimental to, to the, all already built condos here, the way we have them, and the cost that they. here, the way we have them, and the cost that they, that they pay.
That's, that's really...
I don't think it's hard, I can, I can, I'm, I'm not a financial wizard, but I can tell if you sell a house, if you sell a building for a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty, and these people are paying more taxes than, than the whole little, uh, community, they're building a ward.
Well, a lot of the condominiums have come down quite a bit.
Yes, but they're still paying higher taxes than these people who pay with this...
No, they, they, those have come down too, but a lot of those condos now are down sixty pounds, the ones that are up a few...
Do you, do you admit that this will hurt the tax base in the city of Southfield if they build that price houses there?
I, I couldn't say, I don't think so.
All right, okay, you don't worry, okay.
Mr. Lance, I'm gonna ask you that, we move on, okay? We'll have more time, John.
Come on, I'm on an answer job. I think we have to, we usually have to lock the next four or five times.
Sure. Okay, so at this point, I wanna get a consensus around the table, uh, starting with Ms. Seymour, um, a green light or a red light?
I would like a green light.
Uh, that they should continue their planning, yeah, toward the next...
There's a lot to go through.
Right. Help to the Planning Commission.
Right, but I, I don't want it to look like cabins of the north, he's already heard me say that, so I would say...
All right, we have one green light.
I'm in favor of you, thank you.
We have two green lights, Mr. Lance?
Red light.
We have green light.
The home that we moved to, to Southfield.
All right, absolutely, go forward with it. All right, uh, Mr. Percasi?
Yes.
Mr. Percasi, are you yes or no to go forward?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, so we have, uh, six green lights and, uh, one red light. Uh, thank you very much for coming, uh, I'm very excited about what you're trying to do, and I can't wait to see where you go with it. Thank you. All right, um, uh, again, we have, um, one more, um, and, and the reason these are on the agenda tonight, council, is because we would've had to keep these people waiting until June sometime, late June, and so, uh, I did not want them, uh, we're, we're trying to be sensitive to people who wanna develop in Southfield, so this has been, um, bringing this forward tonight, uh, was to speed up the process. Uh, so secondly, Mr. Croft, we have another proposed new development, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you. Um, we, we actually have two different developers who are interested, possibly joining, um, a proposal for the vacant site at Edwards and Southfield Road. Um, I'm gonna invite them to come up and, and sit at the head of the table. One is a proposed Culvers Restaurant, which is an ice cream shop, hamburger restaurant, casual dining. And the second is, uh, indoor, uh, storage facility that would act as a buffer between the proposed Culvers and the residence, so I'm gonna invite them to introduce themselves.
Have a seat at the table, feel free to get a burger. All right, council, if we could have your attention, please, um, would you like to, uh, please introduce yourself, state your name and business address for the record?
My name is Lauren Scarpake with CBRE, a commercial real estate firm, and I represent one of the two developments proposed.
My name's Bob Mahalich at CBRE, and I also represent Culvers, the other proposed, and we're two thousand pounds under the boundary.
Are there any owners here or principals?
Principals. My name is Eugene Sherison with one eight-hundred mini storage, and we're located in Troy.
And the floor is yours.
Okay. Appreciate this forum to present our concept here, just to, um, take temperature of the council. So, we are currently under contract to purchase the northeast corner of Edwards and Southfield Road, the former home of the Harvard Office Complex that recently burned down a few years back. Um, after some initial discussions with, uh, people in the neighborhood, we understand that a mixed-use development might be most likely received by the community. Um, myself and my client, one eight-hundred mini storage, um, have approached Culvers to team with us to develop this site. It's just under two point seven acres of land. Let's talk about Culvers.
Um, thank you. Um, I represent Katie and Brian Schmidt, who own three Culvers today. Uh, they're in Clarkson, Fatton, and Lake Gordan. Um, if you've ever been to a Culvers, it's a real nice facility, there's some photos in there.
Present.
Um, there's, uh, it's a real sharp-looking building, outdoor seating, very family-oriented, and, um, they're very well-received in the communities that they're in. Um, we feel that it was, uh, teaming up with this development, utilizing a, you know, brand-new indoor, um, temperature-controlled mini storage would be a great buffer to the residents behind the building, and, um, having the outdoor seating and the ice cream, we felt that it was well-needed in the city, and, uh, I think it would be, we'd be great cohabitants there. Um, they're a very minimal park, um, they don't get a lot of traffic, and, uh, there is a signal light at the intersection, so I think it would be, it would be well-received. And let's all face it, I think we have enough, um, vacant medical buildings, excuse me, old office buildings and so forth in town, so, um, I'm a retail broker, I've done so for twenty-seven years, uh, with, now presently with CBRE. Um, we do retail sites and do site selections for a lot of, uh, nationals, and this is a desired area, um, it's got great residential population, um, I think that, uh, the target market fits very nicely, uh, it's, uh, it's good food, and, uh, they're very well-received around town. I think it's a good choice today, um, and, and being that there aren't any around, so it's not like that there's a Subway every other mile, or I'm trying to, you know, do that, McDonald's on every other corner, so I think it's a great alternative. Um, if you haven't eaten one, I encourage you to try one. There's a really nice one at Twelve Mile and I-75, in front of the Home Depot, it's relatively new, so if you're in that area, please try the food and check it out. It's, uh, very similar to the architecture that we would like to put there, which is very appealing, it's the new stone, brick and so forth, it's a real nice building.
Okay.
Open for questions.
Anybody else in, if not Mr. Lance, you have to speak.
You gave us, any of these pictures, is that what you're gonna build?
That is a mini storage, so I'm, I was one eight-hundred mini storage, so what we're looking to build is a, uh, high-end, climate-controlled storage facility, um, with a, uh, drive-through, um, a heated drive-through, uh, so something, that's a, what you're looking at there is a, a, um, photo of our facility that we built on Maple Road in Troy.
All right, I have no objection, I'm just surprised, I was told you built, uh, that you, that you're building a burger joint, but, uh, butter burger or something?
We are in front, that sits in front.
In this building?
There'll be a site plan that you didn't get, sir, it's two doors down.
So what we're looking to do is take the two point seven acres, and we're gonna do, build two separate buildings. The Culvers Burger Joint will be fronting the road, and then the...
Okay.
Mini storage will be in the rear of the property.
That's it.
So...
All right, where is it, where is the joint gonna be?
Let's just say that this was Southfield Road, again, we don't have, we have a draw line, okay? Well, let's do it this way, 'cause it'll orientate it this way. So the burger, um, Culvers will be located here, and the storage facility will be located behind it like this, slide that right underneath here, so you can do this, right? So this sits in front, that sits behind it, okay? So this is a large building that sits in front, this sits in front of the building here.
Okay, I have no objection to the, to the building, not at all.
What's that?
But, I have objections to the Culvers store, or whatever you're gonna bring in, the Butter Burger. Butter Burger, in my estimation, is one step lower than fast food. I'm gonna ask you. I know it is. If you don't, if you don't know what Butter Burger is made from, you don't know anything. Okay, especially in the front. Now, all right, how large will that, uh, Butter Burger be?
About, uh, four thousand square feet, sir.
Okay.
Precedent.
And how much, what's, what's, what type of, it's called casual...
Casual dining.
What's casual mean?
That means, you can be like this, I can walk in like this, we can just walk in and choose.
What kind of food?
It's, uh...
Sit down?
It's sit-down.
Okay.
It's sit-down with, with service that you can walk up to, to pick it up, as well as outdoor seating.
You know, on Southfield Road, they had one that had closed up a year, where going to the counter, ordering the steak and the burger sandwiches, and within a year, they went out of business?
Um, they haven't closed one yet, no Culvers have ever closed.
I'm, I'm not saying the Culvers, but in another, an equal to yours, four thousand, what's the seating capacity, how many?
Probably seating capacity is about, um, seventy, eighty seats.
How much?
Seventy to eighty seats.
That's all?
And then you have outdoor seating too.
They work at night, right?
Outdoor seating as well, so you can sit outside.
And how many seats outside?
There's probably another, um, forty seats outside.
On four thousand square foot building, only have seventy seats?
Well, depending on, on what store layout, there's, there probably could be more, yes.
I wanna know the exact amount, you looking at two hundred seats?
Well...
Four thousand square foot building?
I'll, I'll get it for you before this meeting's over.
How can you make any money on seventy seats?
It's a turnover, man. You're serving, you're serving constantly, people walk in, they walk out, they walk in, they walk out.
Carry out a bill.
Carry out a bill.
I'm saying, I can't make a decision, because I know two daughters, I know the side, and...
Mr. Lance, we're not making a decision tonight. Oh, we're not making a decision. We're, we're just approving a concept.
Well, if you're approving a concept, if I don't know what the full concept is, I can't, I can't make a decision.
I appreciate that.
You can vote.
I appreciate that. All right, is there any other council person have a question or a comment? Ms. Jordan?
I have a comment, I have to say, I was first exposed to Culvers when my daughter was attending Grand Valley in Grand Rapids, and that was several years ago, and I've always wanted this franchise to come this way, and it's been here for a number of years now, and I think this would be addition to our city, and I'd like to own people's property.
Okay, um, Ms. Seymour, is there?
I have trouble with any restaurant going into that area, unless it's in the, on the main floor of an office building or something else, I, but I'm, I'm just, I think we have a must-have food place, I'm, I'm like that? I think we have a must-have food places in the city. Um, I'm gonna go up to the one on Madison Heights and check it out, but I, um, for things I've heard, you said you've heard good things from the people in the neighborhood, I've heard just the opposite from people in the neighborhood, so I'm, I'm gonna look into it. I'm not in favor of, uh, when, the restaurant would face which way, onto Southfield Road?
We have to lay it out, but it'll, it'll probably be, um...
On Edwards Street?
Yeah, it'll either be parallel or perpendicular, however it was...
And then, so it'll front basically on the main road, and there'll be other stores behind that?
Yes, and if you do go see the one on, uh, Twelve Mile and, and I-75, it's a gorgeous building, really nice.
I would like to, I would, before I, before I make a decision, okay, Twelve Mile, right, I would like to see a, a draft of what, where you would site it on this site, if it's right on the front, you know, right southfield road, and the mini storage is behind it to protect the neighborhood, I might have a different opinion.
Exactly what it'll be.
Okay, but I wanna see it.
Fair enough. Okay, Mr. Percasi?
Now, I don't think it's Culvers, but I do now want to see that storage in that neighborhood, so, for fifty-fifty, if the storage just belongs somewhere else, not in that area.
Um, Mr. Moss?
Oh, yeah, you know, the mayor and I actually went to a Culvers, uh, I think in Saginaw, um, and so, you know, having been there, I think this is a, a good addition, it's fast food, but I think it's a quality type of establishment that doesn't, you know, necessarily have, carry the negative connotations to a fast food place. Um, I think you know the history of that intersection, and I'm confident that this can be some, a project that works, um, so I definitely encourage you to keep going through the process, and, uh, when it comes back to council, I'm, I'm likely to support it.
And the combined development?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I would like to hear a little bit more about the combination, um, setbacks and things like that, I don't know, has that, has that been all mapped out? So, so you're looking at the, the Culvers on the actual Southfield roadside, and then the storage facility kind of being a buffer in between the neighborhood, and, um, I almost think that could work, because that was kind of the, the complaints about the last project that came, that they didn't want such hustle and bustle of flooding right up to the neighborhood, and that this could be kind of something that, that would create a buffer between the Culvers, which I don't expect too much in-and-out activity that's gonna distract from the neighborhood and the neighborhood, so, I don't know, I, I, I definitely think that it should be something that comes forward, uh, the way that it is, and, uh, see what happens in the Planning Commission, um, when it comes back to council. But I, I'm, I'm positive for you guys moving forward.
Um, Mr. Breger?
Yes, uh, as, as far as the Culvers is concerned, I, I'm not familiar with them at all, so I'll use, uh, the expertise of people who've been there that, uh, that feel that it would be, because they know what expectations we're looking for in our community, so I'd like to see how it, how it looks, how it, uh, works in the other communities, but, um, my question is, with the storage, I just don't know how much storage space this city really needs. Um, it seems like storage, uh, locations pop up like mushrooms around the city. We've got them up and down Telegraph Road, we've got them on Evergreen Road, we've got along the Eight Mile Road, um, and I just don't know what the, uh, fill is of these, um, storage spaces, so I, um, I guess I'm leaning toward, uh, Mr. Percasi, that, uh, you have proved to me that we need more storage space, and I realize that, uh, office space is very expensive, and so is storage space, at least mine keeps going up all, all the time. But, uh, I think the, uh, the restaurant, uh, I, I think we need to move forward on that, but you have proved to me that we need storage space before I can, I can say okay on that.
Um, Ms. Seymour?
This, uh, is this the building that is storage, is that what it looks like for? Because this looks like a motel to me.
Thank you, uh, they're...
Well, I mean, I don't know, but I mean, I, what kind of...
That's, that's a rendering of our, uh, storage facility that we have on Maple Road in Troy, between Coolidge and Crooks.
What kind of storage?
Um, it's, uh, climate-controlled self-storage, um, it's, uh, and I encourage you to go visit that when you're done with your meal at Culvers, it's not that far away, it's, it's really, it, it's really a beautiful facility, uh, and we're proud of it, it actually won the Best of Troy Award, um, it, I don't know if anyone's seen it, but it's, it's really a, a beautiful...
It does look like a typical storage, I mean, I've seen several, I know that store went across from where I live, and it was, you know, it was, I'm, I'm not totally convinced this is the good thing to put on Southfield Road, to be honest with you. I mean, if, if it is, I would want to be the restaurant and fountain behind, but I'm not convinced that this is the right thing on Southfield Road, because that's a premier road for us.
And we, we took pride, we, um, we developed that site, and we really have a lot of pride, and I really encourage you, uh, to...
And this is the storage, I'll, I'll go up first.
Two four, two four seven seven West Maple in Troy, it's, it's really a beautiful facility, we're very proud of it.
It's a bit more on, on, really on Edwards Street, correct? Not on Southfield Road?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gone too far in, in laying out the plan, we really wanted to come here today, before you...
But it's next to residential?
Right.
Two four seven seven...
Seven West Maple.
...
And, and you'll notice that that facility, we only have, uh, approximately seven parking spots, it's very light traffic, and there are days when we barely have twenty cars coming through in and out of the facility, very light use.
What's your...
You know, we, we haven't put our architects to, uh, to do it yet, we really, we really haven't got that clear.
So the, the rendering is really not, it'll look like that, but it won't necessarily do that size?
It'll be scaled, I don't know.
It'll be scaled to the site, and, um, you know, architecturally fit in for the neighborhood, and, and maybe improvements.
All right, Mr. Moss?
Yeah, maybe it's to help us out a little bit, can you talk about the market need or the market demand for the, for, for storage units? I guess maybe that's something we're curious about. Um, Mr. Fraser talked about them popping up, but I mean, if they're popping up, there's obviously a need for it in the community, or in these communities around here.
What we're finding is it's, it's sort of local to every neighborhood, um, that's the short.
Yeah. You know, you're finding from the commercial office perspective, that city of Southfield has, what, twenty-seven million square feet of commercial office space? People aren't wanting to ship their stuff off to Iron Mountain sixty miles away anymore, they want to... They want it local, so you have office users, that it's cheaper for them to do their back office document storage than you need to just file things away for seven years? Cheaper just to go get storage units.
Yeah, Bob, go off, leave it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, you know, if there's a demand for it, if it's not something that's gonna be vacant and obsolete in, you know, five years, if you think that this is something that's needed in the community, I'm comfortable with that. Um, and definitely we want to make sure that it doesn't, if the rendering is good, you know, I would be inclined to support it. If it's business in the neighborhood, if it's not an eyesore, if it doesn't look like, you know, a, a big corporate warehouse off of a few houses down the street, you know, then I would be comfortable with the whole project.
So, you know, we, we really went out of our way to build a, a nicer project than anyone else, I, and you won't, don't believe me, don't, don't take my word for it. Go over to, go over to the Apple Road, and, uh...
Jill and I are gonna go to Culvers and go like... Sounds good.
Stop in, um, just stop in to take, walk in, take a look at the lobby, and, uh...
Become a senior shop owner, seriously. Does anybody have storage units? I think this is a lot. You know, you leave, you checked yourself in, you left it, and a couple of years later, and...
No, I go there, the regular agents to visit.
I'm surprised to hear that, because I thought everything you have is in your garage.
Everything is in your garage.
So there is one in four.
Um, we have Mr. Porcotti and Ms. Seymour.
I just wanted to make comment that, you know, it was proposed to have a storage, uh, for St. Beaches, was gonna have a shopping strip along Southfield Road, storage in the back of that, and a restaurant on the corner of Twelve Mile and Southfield. And that was turned down, so, um, basically, the people really came out against the storage, they were giving up any option. Just to bring you up to be in, in, in the neighborhood that happens.
Quick, quick question, I mean, is, is this, you said controlled storage, which really indicates to be document storage, as opposed to people, you know, people that lost their home or moved out or downsized and have their, all their junk?
So we, we, um, service, um, we have business clients, business customers, and, um, and residential users also.
I, I think the climate word is climate controlled, it's all...
Right, climate controlled, right.
The, the, the entire building is heated and air conditioned, a lot of the older products along the Five Mile Road and some of the other facilities on Telegraph are not heated. This is, this is somewhere where you would put, um, good furniture, upholstered goods, clothing, et cetera.
I mean, we have one on Greenfield Road, and we have one on, um, Love Mall, right on, uh, in, I guess it's Little Park, right on, right, Little Island? And, uh, they're all one-story, well, one and two-story, and it looks like an office building type, and it's on Greenfield Road, it looks very nice, so one...
Thank you, that's our facility.
That's just a little, are you, are you serious, in El Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Jordan?
The storage facilities have a gate to protect the, um, the ice cream unit, you're not having a gate?
Yes, there, it's not shown, but, um, all of our facilities are, have, uh, gate, uh, access controls with, uh, codes.
But the gate doesn't come off the street, the gate gets to get to the back of the property. So you, you as a driving in customer can pull in, walk into the customer service area, but you can't go any further without going through a gate?
All right, uh, at this point then, I'd like to take a, uh, reading of a green light or a red light that is not approved. This is just to let these folks know whether there's enough support for this project to go forward, or these projects. And I'm gonna take them separately, we're, we'll start with Culvers, um, Ms. Seymour, green or red light?
Uh, red light.
Ms. Jordan?
I, I'm just taking the blue.
All right, um, Mr. Lance, red light. Mr. Fraser?
Green.
Moss, go forward. Porcotti, please. And I'm green, you got five green light items. All right, then on the storage facility, um, again, keeping in mind that, um, what we've seen is not exactly what we're, what we're getting, it'll be proportionate to the value. So, um, Ms. Seymour, a green light or a red light?
I, I have the green.
All right, so, uh, I'll put a yellow light there, I'll go. Um, Ms. Jordan?
A yellow light.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Moss, or, well, Mr. Lance, rather?
You're mixing me up with gentlemen.
You're both handsome, right, what do you look like?
There may be some credit, I'm not.
Okay, um, uh, yes, well, they... All right, you're giving this a green light?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Fraser?
Uh, I wanna make sure, I wanna be clear that it's not the design of the building, whether or not we need one, so it's orange or yellow.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I would go forward with it, with the, with the concerns that, you know, you have to just be, uh, flexible to considering the design options that match the neighborhood and, and, and keep it kind of a neighborhood feel to it, so yeah, I'm a green.
Okay, Mr. Porcotti?
No, I agree that it's mostly a light industrial area.
Okay, so it's a red light. All right, and I, I'm a green light as well, so you have three greens, one red, and three yellows on the storage. Blue, orange. Uh, three greens, one red, and three yellows.
And what's the...
You have some work to do.
Can we do the combo now?
All right, yeah. There are some outstanding questions, we'll work with the respective applicant, get some marketing data, see if they have some better examples. Sometimes they give the opportunity to come to the Culvers, but we'll bring this to people and that to others.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Ms. Seymour. All right, we're gonna move right along, uh, Mr. Sharet, we have, uh, a receipt of proposal for demolition and restoration of a former Ramada Inn property, and we see that rural town is, uh, the city, um, they're moving a rule ten, of course. Uh, we have, uh, it's moved in support, all of the favor of a rule ten. All right. Yeah, we are, uh, Mr. Porcotti, after all this, so we're gonna put this on the floor, um, and why don't we, before we introduce the motion, uh, why don't we get Mr. Sharet? But we will take it forward.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, on June eighteenth, on the twelfth, council authorized the acquisition of a tax closure property located at seventeen oh one seven West Nine Mile Road, a former Ramada Inn, and the open tummy treasures is a pot. Also, the month of June, the downtown development authority, entered into agreement with the former old business property, require the five acres of site adjacent to the Ramada Inn. The requirement of this agreement was a commitment to demolish the existing structure, to be argued, to hold site, and get environmental aid. The first C D B department conducted a process, uh, with the assistance of, uh, his invaluable assistance of, uh, Mr. Ami Kekish, see him right there in front row, to the right of, of Mr. Coverford, uh, and, uh, providing, uh, a specialized forensic engineering review of the beds due to their complexity, and assisted in the analysis and specialized evaluation, uh, of the beds on this, on this project. This evaluation resulted in three companies receiving the highest rate recommendations for demolition and site restoration services. The Adamo Group of Detroit, Michigan provided the lowest bid among the three finalists companies, that bid being one million, three hundred twenty thousand dollars. And we, as a city, uh, have added a, a contingency of ten percent, uh, in this case, under our control, of course, uh, to provide that if there are any issues that need to be resolved, to get this project completed, that we have, uh, we were with all the deal. Uh, the overall project, which involves, uh, which involved the acquisition, uh, we need to remember first and foremost that this is an economic development initiative for redevelopment and for light avoidance. Uh, that is the reason we entered into this whole concern back in twenty twelve. Uh, the estimated cost of this entire project includes all the costs of acquisition, termination of utilities, demolition, environmental abatement, site restoration, and contingency, is one million, nine fifty-nine, eight ninety-three. This is the amount that we, is our intention to recover, uh, in the marketplace, uh, once the land is, uh, is cleared and the site, uh, is improved, that we will hopefully can market this aggressively, and, uh, at least to recover as possible, hopefully, to do better. We covered the fact that this is a rule ten, and we appreciate all these concerns, uh, that we're transparent, and we're comfortable in asking for a rule ten in this particular case, only because of the amount of public discussion this has been with this, with this project. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, and also due to the complexity, and the fact that it will also take place at the same time that construction with Nine Mile Road will be occurring, so we need to work through M dot and through the, uh, D K E and other empathies, uh, to make this all come into place and meet our time of experience with the overall project. With that, our recommendation is to include the goal of bid for this project, uh, just add this company as that considerable experience in complex, uh, projects of this nature, so if there are any questions in that regard, uh, Mr. Kekish is here, if he can assist, or that is Mr. Kerry Comerford, who also works very closely with this project and requires that.
Um, I'd like to have a motion to put this on the floor in a second, and then we'll discuss this, I'm, I'm... Before it moves by, um, Mr. Moss, reported by, uh, Ms. Jordan, uh, comments or questions from council, Mr. Moss?
Yeah, just, uh, I, I don't know if this is the time you wanna get into this discussion, or if you wanna bring it up, visioning session or later. I think we need to have a conversation about what, I'm in favor of the demolition, of course, but what the next steps are. What are we doing with the property, are we keeping the Nine Mile frontage? Um, Mr. Porcotti and I had a meeting on Friday where we, or Thursday, Friday, where we discussed some of the, you know, who's owning it, where are we, you know, what are we gonna do with it next? So, you know, I don't know if this is part and parcel to, you wanna discuss this now, or if you wanna just have the vote, which of course, I think will get council support, but we gotta, we have to get that piece out too.
I think there's concern about what happens to the property next, and I don't think that we can accomplish that tonight.
Okay.
Given what else we've done.
Yeah.
But I, I think from what I've been told around the table, everybody is concerned, especially about Nine Mile frontage, I've heard...
Yeah.
From, um, most of my colleagues about that. So, uh, we will take that up at another time, and, uh, Ms. Gisar and Mr. Sharet, you'll still know that.
Yes, so we, we do believe that there's need for dialogue, and we're prepared to do the follow-up.
All right, then. All right, is there any other comment or question on this, uh, motion, Mr. Fraser?
Uh, we're gonna be doing some construction work on Nine Mile Road about the same time as, as it was going on, are they gonna be compatible, or are they gonna be in contest with each other?
Be it suggested that they use Runland Avenue to the northwest and Service Drive?
That the road was built for the pedestrian, that they're...
Uh, it's in pretty rough shape, so I don't want to be doing more damage to it, like...
Mr. Gisar will be leading a, uh, a group of state, uh, employees, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Kekish will also join. Uh, and we are gonna be meeting with M dot to work through all the complexities we have to do to make this project work, to the property is oriented, so we do have positive, uh, feedback from M dot on this, and we're fully confident that we can, we can make this work. One of the things we accomplished recently is we had a, uh, a, a concern of delay with removal of the utilities, we worked through that. Uh, that delay has, has been resolved, and so everything appears to be in place to make this work, to be properly oriented.
Okay, um, Ms. Lawrence?
I just wanted to say this time, um, the last project that we had, I believe, that, um, that I can recall, was our public library, our city tax eight hundred dollars, I wanna make sure this project is being inclusive and, and, um, advertised to minorities, so that we give minorities, because that is a objective of the city. Um, this contract should ensure that women, minorities are given an opportunity. I know that tonight you're voting on that, um, I was waiting for a councilwoman, George, to step up, and, because she usually makes sure that, that we do that. And this is going to be the general contractor, and if they're here, I want them to know whether their plan is towards being inclusive and making sure that in this demolition, because there's a number of people involved, that we will be inclusive to minority and women.
Kerry answer that, sir? State your name and the, uh, for the record.
Kerry Comerford, and I'm, I'm a citizen of the city. Ami Kekish, with Takayan Jackson Tower, uh, six one five Griswold, Detroit, four eight two two six.
One of our engineering firms?
Yes.
Um, you heard Ms. Lawrence's question?
Yes.
Basically, uh, this was a pre-qualification process, um, we were working with timeframes to, to get this project going
because, uh, part of the agreement that the D V A had with, with the owner, and, and so we sent out, um, a request for proposal through, uh, purchasing department, uh, and, and all people who were, um, who wanted to apply had the option to apply. And then when they, they submitted, we got the, uh, proposals, uh, and then they're evaluated by, by Young. Really, Chair, I don't think that's what the mayor's getting at. What she's getting at is, this is a big contract, and she wants to make sure that, that whatever it be, of course, you know, we have any input on this, there are legal issues that we'll go through and do things legally proper. But the, the general contractor needs to account those things that the mayor is having in terms of opportunities. Uh, that's, that's what, that's what I believe the mayor is getting at.
Yeah, because there is always an opportunity for some content way tall away, um, and that's, and so if the general contractor goes forward, it is the expectation of the city, but there isn't just the general, well, we invited someone and they didn't show up. We made a concerted effort with our tax dollars of the library to, to, to direct mailing, to make sure we advertise to groups that represent a different minority, I thought, to give them an opportunity, so, and women groups, so I just wanna make sure that this is not, if you don't say it, it doesn't happen, and, and usually there is a plan to achieve that, and I'm wondering if you have that plan?
Well, uh, I agree with you, uh, I mean, uh, most of my career, the last thirty years, been in Detroit, and, uh, addressing these issues for, you know, minority participation, uh, women participation in projects, and I believe Adamo is aware of that. Not for this project, uh, but, you know, through all, uh, their, uh, company work that I am aware of, they did, uh, bring in, you know, minorities and women. So, I mean, the next step for this, after, uh, your approval, uh, to go, you know, where the contract, the Adamo, is to negotiate with Adamo, the language of the contract. There's some aspect, you know, for each project, especially this, this is very specialized, uh, project because of the, because of the height of it. I mean, there are a lot, uh, quite a few demo contractors, very successful, very good contractors, uh, but they don't have the equipment to attack seventeen-story high building, right? They're only, they're do, you know, residential, uh, schools, which, you know, you have one or two-story high school that type, uh, and there are contractors who will do a million square feet of demo, but horizontal demo, which means, you know, one or two, uh, industrial building type manufacturing. When we start going up in elevation, that's become very, very specialized, uh, work, uh, that abatement is very specialized. That basement is very specialized. Okay. But there are opportunities, depending on the top, you know, what they could self-contract. I think a discussion with Adamo will, will provide the positive.
Can you tell me, is this, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to interject that with respect to the library, what we did contractually was obligate the contractors to do outreach. And we, and we went through and listed where we wanted some outreach effort so that it would be, you know, distributed to all kinds of firms and companies. So, I think that what Mr. Sherratt is saying as well, we can negotiate that, at least outreach, and there's certain, we're not talking about any quotas or subsidies, but the outreach so that everyone has a chance to bid on the self-contract, is what we're trying to do.
And I want to make sure that's in the contract. So, that was my question. Thank you.
Can you, can you tell me, is this going to be an explosion or is it going to be a standard wrecking ball, you know?
That's what standard, like you, the city did not allow using any explosion type.
Okay.
Because that, you don't control, you know?
Yeah.
If it's out, you know, lower tights building, you could do it.
Does that have city ordinance?
No.
So, why don't you, don't?
In the meeting that, that was brought up, it was, it was discussed and it was thought about by the contract, we kind of left it open and let them make the decision. But because of the location of the building, TB two across, across Nine Mile Road, the community college, college across the street, residential to the south, so it's a little concern was the dust that was going to be caused by the explosion. So, that's sometimes hard to, it's extremely hard to control.
And the location of the, the site is, you know, very sensitive to the area, to what you have around in that area. And if you want to control that dust and, you know, public reaction to it as much as you can.
All right. Any other questions by council? If not, then thanks for the roll call. Yes.
Mr. Sherratt?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Ms. Shirett?
Very reluctant, yeah. But we even alternative reuse, adaptive reuse. However, I have to, been told the building is not adaptable, so. With that, we have seven, oh, Mr. Sherratt, on a rule ten. Then we'll, okay. We're going to move on next to, we have both a rule ten and the approval. Yes, we did. Thank you very much. Yeah. Are we doing the moratorium before we do the visioning? That would be up to the chair if you'd like to move it. Why don't we just very quickly do the item form at the front? I think this is yours as well.
Through the chair, in discussion with the city's attorney's office, our department recently has had a request for up to five hookah lounges, and we don't have anything specific on the book to deal with it. It is regulated by state law under the cigar exemption. There is a state license that is required, and then it falls under our, our normal retail establishment. But we don't have anything to deal with specifically outdoor seating, the potential impact on the smoke on the station properties and so forth. Therefore, since we've received five of these in, in recent times, we're requesting a hundred and eighty day moratorium to put in place in order for the legal department, the planning department to come up with some reasonable standards for future review. Now, one of these hookah lounges at Promenade Flazome has submitted and provided all of the state requirements, and therefore will be moving forward. But this is to give us time to review the other four proposed inquiries within the city. And I would defer to the city attorney if she has any additional comments to add.
Yeah, just that this will give an opportunity for both the planning department, the city's attorney's office, and then obviously the planning commission to go through and show me whether there's some reasonable regulations that should be put in place, should be, should be established.
It's been moved by Mr. Porcosi, reported by Mr. Moss, all is in favor of a rule ten?
I think it's a rule ten.
No, that's a post question.
All is in favor of a rule ten?
Aye.
Okay, we have a rule ten.
This is shared, it's moved as a moratorium for three of the higher days, days, eight and nine.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Porcosi, reported by Mr. Moss. Now, discussion, Ms. Seymour and, and Mr. Lance.
Now, I don't, I don't see why we need six months to, to study this. I think this could be done in a very quick manner by some phone calls to the state and the county and some research on the internet. I mean, I, I just can't see six months to check this out. I think that's not totally unnecessary. I really do. I think we could do it in sixty days. I, I can approve that one. But just, we don't need that kind of time.
Through the chair to respond to Ms. Seymour. This is consistent with other moratoriums that we've put in place?
I, I know that, Kerry, but I'm sorry, I disagree. I totally disagree.
If I could, if I could just state, we were asking and requesting a hundred and eighty days.
I understand that. Let me finish, let me finish. But it's not the same as the wind turbines and some of these things that were very, very difficult. I, I totally, I, there's no way you can convince me it needs six months. I think this could be done very quickly. It's, it's not that difficult. And I really am not, I'm not going to support it.
Through the chair, if I could just respond for all due respect to Ms. Seymour, the process is ninety days to, to advertise, have a public hearing by the planning commission and submit to the city council, once we have all our facts in place. So, I, I think likely we could do this in ninety to a hundred and twenty days. We're requesting one hundred and eighty days, again, be consistent with the pawn shop moratorium, the wind turbine moratorium, and the medical marijuana. We will certainly do our best to bring it back in a shorter amount of time. One of, one of the issues that is complex, one of the proposals is for zero nicotine, and based on our preliminary investigation with other communities, there are a lot of challenges with enforcement. And therefore, we need a reasonable amount of time to do our due diligence so that we can bring back reasonable regulations to the council. And again, I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Shirett, he interrupted me, and I just want to finish one thing.
All right.
And to write a regulation is one thing, but to bring the information back to council, I don't, I don't think it, we need a hundred and eighty days. I think we could do it in a lot less.
Okay, and this word, do you want to?
Well, you know, again, the one hundred and eighty days is to get all the way through drafting the regulations, getting through the planning commission, getting the public there, and then voting out of the city council. We were talking about total. We certainly could come back if, if the, if the goal here of council is to see some of the regulations before we even go through that process. I think we, we could have that drafted.
I, I want to see, I want to see what research tells us about these before we do any drafting of regulations.
And before it would go back into the planning.
Right, right.
Well, we could come back in sixty days with that, but we wouldn't be, we don't, again, we wanted to put a moratorium in place so that we don't have to come back any then, and we know we could get through the entire process. So, if you would like to send it, come back to you within sixty with some of our research and proposals, that's.
Because I don't think this is a big research project. I think, we're not, we're not that busy right now. And it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't come near the medical marijuana or the cell tower, not the cell tower, but the wind turbine, doesn't even approach that level, I don't believe. And I would like to see a lot sooner. I'd like to have somebody board in sixty days.
Okay. Mr. Lance was next.
I think a hundred and eighty days is too long. I would agree that the legal department come back in the sixty days, and then we'll move further from, then we'll vote from there.
But we need a moratorium. Okay. Cut it down to ninety, to ninety days. Can you do that? All right. I'm going to come back to the day. I'm not, Mr. Fraser.
I don't have a term of one hundred and eighty days. If we go down sooner than a hundred and eighty days, they'll be back sooner than a hundred and eighty days. And I'm not, I don't have the privilege of sitting here on the nallys, sitting here and say how busy they are. We don't know what the, what our, our legal department is having in front of them right now and to say, oh, we're not that busy. They come back in ninety days. I guess I'm not going to lay down on it. I'm going to give them as much flexibility, but they understand what our concerns are. And if they can get down faster than a hundred and eighty days, that's it.
Anybody else? All right, so what I want to do now is, do I have, I need a sense of where we are with the day. We have a hundred and eighty on the floor, and we have two members who suggested less time. One it said sixty, one it said ninety. So, I'll start with Mr. Porcosi. Are you okay with a hundred and eighty?
Yes.
Hundred and eighty, Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Okay. You want it ninety, Ms. Jordan? All right, and Ms. Seymour said sixty, I'll go with a hundred and eighty, with the idea that you're going to come back as soon as you can. We certainly, if, if, I would think that if our research was positive, we wouldn't want to impede anybody from opening one of these establishments.
And this number, we, we have the hardship provision within the resolution that even during that hundred and eighty, we have to take counsel and, and you take a hardship and council could go ahead and allow them in, even in the face of more problems, so.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, and, and we have the rule ten. I just took a fence around the day, so now I decline the wait, so all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. A both?
No.
All right, no. Two no's, five yeses. Okay, we're moving on to Mr. Sherratt. We're going to go to the visioning session now, and Mr. Sherratt has an introduction.
A demonstration project for the American dream. This is my vision for the city of Southfield. To answer the first question outlined in our agenda materials, are you proud of Southfield? Yes, absolutely. Our core values is to build high service levels and respect the persons of all walks of life. As been said, thought deep and action clear. I'm proud to say that over the years, through good times and tough times, we, the elected leadership of the city and city staff have acted consistent with this core value. In many respects, we have set the gold standard in public service. No jurisdiction that I'm aware of in this area, and none that I've read about or heard about over the years that I've done in municipal government, provide a higher level of services than we provide to our public. Citing the second question in our outline, what inspires you about Southfield? What inspires me about Southfield is its integrity. Key staff and our elected officials care, and they, and they do not act contrary to our core values. Their actions match their thought. Question three, how important are local heroes in Southfield? My answer is very important, and there are plenty of them in this city. People who work day in and day out, make Southfield a demonstration project for the American dream. A place where human dignity comes first, respect for all. A place where there's economic opportunity as well. That's why we fight every day to build these offices and attract investors and work at building our tax base. Jobs, jobs, and jobs, that's ultimately what we are fighting for. So, I'm proud of where we are as a city, where we have been, and especially how we've addressed the great recession, with principal leadership and full and consistent support from the mayor and city council. But we can always get better. It's good to reaffirm our core values and principles as we work through the process for the desire and pride of agreed upon set of priorities, a compelling collaborative vision. That can be used to most effectively marshal our limited resources to achieve the most public good. This is how we can make sure that the city of Southfield continues to be a beacon, a demonstration project for the American dream.
Okay, and here we go to Mr. Brode. Second, we're going to move down to the other end.
I'll, I'll start with just an overview. Tonight, parts A and B is, first of all, is a warm-up session. There are no wrong answers. We're going to start with the macro and work towards the micro. The purpose of the first two exercises are to generate as many ideas as possible. Council can piggyback on other ideas, and the same, the same item can be both a positive and a negative from your point of view. Again, there are no wrong answers, and we want to generate as many ideas as possible. At the end of the exercise, we will ask the councils to generate a top ten list. That list can be more than ten, and then the council will be given an opportunity to vote on, on priorities. In your packet are some worksheets for you to jot down some answers. I'm hoping that this will be a free flow of discussion so that we can generate as many ideas as possible. Are there any questions at this time? And can the city staff, Jerry? Otherwise, I'm, I would tell you, invite you to move up a little bit, just to, to the chairs of mayor.
Yes, I just wanted to be clear that I will be part of this discussion and voting too, as you just said, council. Thank you.
I apologize. I, I, the intent is all elected officials, everyone sitting at the table will have an opportunity to, to vote. Again, there are no wrong answers here, but just if council members, I'm going to throw out the first question, and as Mr. Sherratt had already given his response, are you proud of Southfield? Are there anybody around the table that want to weigh in? Yes.
The first question goes on your power topic. My answer is no. I have found many, many, many a time that the city of Southfield, let's say, the city of Southfield was usually the, the right to the business of Southfield. My estimation, there has been very little proof that the city of Southfield should be proud of anyone. Decisions have been made which have had them out to destruction of the city of Southfield, and they keep going that way. They keep going that way. So, my answer is no.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I would say yes. When you look at the state as a whole, you know, communities throughout the state, there are other communities that had to put up a vote of whether or not to keep the library open. There are other communities that have decimated Parks and Rec, literally closed up the shop and said, we don't have a Parks and Rec department. There are other communities that, in the same village election that we had in May of two thousand and eleven, didn't pass the march. Had to lay off police officers, had to, it put a threat to their city's public safety. Southfield, for one reason or another, and I don't give the credit to the council alone, certainly, I know that we have hardworking staff, hardworking department heads, we've weathered the storm. We've been hit harder probably than other communities because we're two-thirds commercial tax base. So, when the commercial tax base collapses, we, we had to really hold on. But we, we could have been another statistic, we really could have, in terms of a, of a community that once was and now isn't, and what we still are. There are a lot of opportunities, but I would say I'm proud of the fact that we're still standing. We have a lot to brag about, and, you know, We have a lot to brag about, and, you know, still, yeah, I, I, when I'm, when I'm out with friends who don't live in Southfield, I talk about the community quite a bit, and I'm happy to live here, so yeah, proud.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I want to say that being an elected official in Southfield for 20 years, I can say we have a lot to be proud of. With the changes in the community, in the community, with our aging community and infrastructure, we have continued, um, to keep the city viable and competitive. We have destroyed a lot of stereotypes that usually come with a majority, minority community. We have continued to be a place that people want to work in and live. I think that sometimes you get so caught in the battle that you don't see the progress that the city is making, but when you, I visit a lot of communities and talk to a lot of other elected officials, and we are actually looked at with reverence of how do we do it? How do we maintain our city? How do we have a community with so many folks saying, oh, they're going to die, and we never die? So I, I'm very proud of our staff who, if this city, if this city shrunk, we continue to get the work done. That has been amazing to me. Uh, it's been harder, we have to, we had to grow some more patience, but I think the fact that we have continued to, to move forward, because we could have just sat down and died, and we didn't. And there's so many people, and I give the staff credit for this, that rolled up their sleeve and got the job done.
Thank you. Um, what, I, I will go to everybody. I'm going to ask that we try to keep two to three comments per question, but, Mr. Fercassi?
I was going to say that, you know, 55 years, we grew from a rural community to the number one business address in Michigan, and we're one of the most respected communities in the state of Michigan.
Mr. Cyberg? Um, I'll be very brief. I'm extremely proud of this city, and if I weren't, um, I certainly wouldn't hold public office here, nor would I live here. Ms. Seymour?
I am extremely proud of Southfield. Um, I, what happened to us with the economy was not, not our doing. It happened, um, we were hit very hard with our, because of our commercial base, and it was all about the, um, everybody knows this, the banks were driven into all of this. It had nothing to do with Southfield. I am extremely proud of our residents, I'm extremely proud of our staff. I think we have a, a staff that goes well beyond the expectations. Uh, they put in long hours, they, many of them are doing two and three jobs. Um, I can't, I can't hear the sound water to comment, but I'm extremely proud of this city. I think it's a wonderful city, a beautiful city, a successful city, and I'm proud to live here.
Thank you. Uh, next question, what char, I'm sorry, I didn't see your question.
Um, I thought you were going to go to everyone around the table, or how?
I, I will the first question.
But how would we do it?
I would like to just to get two or three, um, responses for each question in the future, but I want to give everyone a chance on the first one.
Yes, I'm proud of them.
Thank you. What charms you about Southfield? What inspires you? Mr. Frazier?
I'm going to say if I'm proud. What charms me, I'm proud of the city of Southfield. But, uh, what charms me about the, the city is, is the uniqueness of being a, an urban community and a rural community within our same boundaries. Uh, it doesn't take more than five minutes from one side of the city to another to, to go from a small lot, small houses, uh, to large lots, large houses, fishing, uh, walking in the woods. That's very, very charming, and what inspires me is the fact that each year it seems like our parks, and I give a lot of credit to our parks and the rent department, to make the, our parks, uh, enticing, and, uh, we see all kinds of resonants, uh, using our parks. And one of the things that is so charming, but sort of kind of frustrating too, is our library is such a magnet that almost more people from outside of the city of Southfield come to our library than our own city people. But the bottom line is, we did it, and that's what charms me.
And I, I, uh, just to piggyback, um, I think someone summarized it at one of our workshops, horses to high rises, which I thought was a great. Anybody else, a quick comment on what inspires you? Ms. Seymour?
Yeah, I have to say, I, I think, you know, it isn't often that Mr. Frazier and I really agree, but I, well.
Cheerful.
Of course it is, Ma, of course it is. But, I mean, he took, in a sense, he took the words right out of my mouth. Every, I agree with everything he said, but also what charms me about Southfield are the people that live here. I think we have fabulous people living here. And campaigning over the last few days, as many as it has had to do in getting our petitions. I've met so many wonderful people. It's just, it's a party just to be out there doing that. Um, we have great people, we have a unique city, I think, like, uh, uh, Mr. Frazier said, you can go from the big city to the country, and, uh, that, that makes us unique. So that's it.
Thanks.
We just want to add that, um, in addition to the diversity of, uh, wonderful people that live here, and also the various ages of the people, there's a lot of young people moving in, and we saw that at one of our meetings. We're also centrally located. People are amazed when they come to Southfield, they say, how do you get here? Well, it's only 15 minutes. How do you get there? If we're like 15 minutes from any which direction, which is just wonderful.
Thank you. How important are local heroes in Southfield? Mr. Lance?
I don't know what he answered up, but the, that means, um, the city of Southfield are more important people every time living there. Kind of a small city, the residents, everybody else, Southfield, they're very important. But I live, I live brilliant, I'm just in love with the, the government, it's, it's all a lot.
Okay, thank you. The veterans, um, Ms. Madam Mayor?
I think I could do a better job of that. It's sometimes there's a sense of, well, I did more than her, or who is that person? I think, I go to other communities where they name parks, they name buildings, they take a sense of pride in identifying the people who have their handprints on the city. And I think that we could do a better job of celebrating our local heroes. I noticed on the wall, we used to have the citizen of the year. We don't even do that anymore. Where we recognize a citizen who, um, just show up and, and be involved. I, I think this is some, um, a missed mark for us.
Ms. Jordan? I see the local heroes on a different angle, not to give any disrespect to what she says, but I see the local heroes as being police and fire because they are the ones that will take care of the, uh, the needs of the community in keeping us safe and secure. And as well as, I have to say, um, Mr. Jim Charette, over the years, has really given his vision financially that it's protected us, and so I think, uh, him as being a local hero of the city.
Okay, um, I'm going to move on to the next question. Is Southfield beautiful? Is the city silhouette suitable for a postcard? Ms. Seymour?
I have to say, yes. We have beautiful, I mean, and you look at our calendar, look at the pictures in the calendar, and yes, we could do a lot of postcards. Absolutely.
I would say, uh, the skyline is beautiful, but I think there's some parts of the city that could not be on postcards.
Okay, thank you. Are your senses overwhelmed by what Southfield offers? Anyone want to take a stab at that? Okay. How often do you meet someone you don't know in Southfield?
Often.
Yeah, often, okay. How do people greet each other here? Hugs? Mr. Cyberg?
Um, I, in my neighborhood, people wave all the time. Uh, I'm always pleased that people are so friendly. It gives the, the sense of neighborhood, a neighborliness.
Great. Does Southfield give you a rush? All right? Does Southfield have a 24/7 culture?
No.
All right? Are there happy demonstrations in the city?
Yes.
Okay? Can you find your way without a map?
Yeah.
Do children go to school by themselves?
Yes.
Does the city sometimes surprise you?
All the time.
Surprised as me. Can you improvise in your city?
Yes.
Can you be what you really are in Southfield?
Yeah.
Okay? How often do you feel on vacation when you are at home?
My backyard.
Okay? Do you ever get homesick for Southfield when you're away?
Yes. And I, after that, yes, the program that I'm in took us to Roscommon County last month, and I was telling you, you know, we had to touch dead beaver skin and, uh, you know, all these dead animals, and I'm thinking, I want to be back in the city, so.
Yes.
I did not see a bear, but I was on the lookout.
All right, one, uh, one final question before we go into our SWOT analysis. Does Southfield make you dream?
Yes, absolutely. Um, there's always more possibilities.
Great. Again, that, that just is, um, some of the attributes that makes the city worth living in. Uh, we score well in some areas, and, uh, there's always room for improvement. Our next, um, exercise, we're going to try to take about 10 minutes under each category. Mr. Spence is going to, uh, assist in, in taking notes. Um, it's our SWOT analysis. We're going to talk about the city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We're going to spend at least 10 minutes on each item. Um, hopefully we'll get, uh, at least one comment from each of the elected officials first, and then we'll go back for, um, multiple comments. And, uh, again, just to remind you that somebody's strength could be someone else's weakness. There are no wrong answers. So with that, who would like to start off on a strength in the city? Mr. Lance?
Strengths, all office buildings and skyline.
Okay, Mr. Lance, we're going to try to get one comment from everyone first, and then we'll go back to everybody. Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Location.
Location. Now, I want to make sure that, uh, Mr. Spence has enough time.
Are you going around the table?
I'll go around the table the first time. Mr. Frazier?
Sure, um, access to express lanes.
Okay, access to express lanes. Mr. Moss?
Growth of Lawrence Tech and OCC.
Okay, growth of Lawrence Tech and OCC. Ms. Banks?
City services.
We'll go back to you, Ms. Seymour?
City services.
City services. Ms. Jordan?
Our financial position.
Okay, our financial position. Mr. Fercassi?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Mr. Cyberg?
Um, variety of housing, uh, options.
Okay, variety of housing options. Mr. Charette? Our staff, okay, city staff? Ms. Ward?
Uh, potential for city center.
Potential for city center. Okay, um, Mr. Lance, you have some additional comments.
There are a lot of them.
Okay? Public safety, police and fire. Okay? Public safety, police and fire. Any other, uh, we'll come back to you. Anyone else? Mr. Frazier?
Public schools.
Public schools. Mr. Moss? Our resident? Madam Mayor?
Our diversity.
Okay, city's diversity. Mr. Cyberg?
Uh, some of our unique architecture.
All right, unique architecture. Anybody else? Mr. Frazier?
Uh, our parks and their family-oriented activities.
Okay, parks, family-oriented activities. Ms. Seymour?
I think our library, I think our library.
Our library, definitely. Mr. Lance?
Providence Hospital.
Okay? Providence Hospital. Ms. Jordan?
I was thinking of the major, um, TV stations that are.
Okay, our media? Broadcast media? Ms. Seymour?
No, we, uh, school, we have quite a few universities.
Okay? Higher education?
Higher education, don't, yeah, somewhere in the.
Okay? Ms. Banks?
Do we air diversity?
All right, anyone else?
I would add, uh, the fact that we have existing infrastructure.
Okay.
We're not, existing infrastructure, not building up for the first time.
Mr. Charette? I, I would just like to throw this one in because it was recently brought to our attention by a company that is going to, uh, be developing here, and that is our predictable climate. You can do business 365 days a year. Our, our geographic location.
And that, that, uh, I think that the point you're making is we have, uh, least likely to have earthquakes, major storm events and so forth, which makes our geographic location a positive for business attraction data centers and so forth. Mr. Fercassi?
Major business center.
Major business center. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, uh, our pavilion, it's even has a sign on 696 to advertise our pavilion.
Okay, our pavilion. Mr. Cyberg?
Um, our fiber, um.
Fiber, optic network?
Right.
Okay? Anybody else? Mr. Lance?
Beautiful city.
Beautiful city. See, it sounds like you're proud of it. Mr. Lance, I know you have a list. You want to throw another one out there?
Okay, good developers?
Ms. Ward?
Okay.
Okay? Any, Mr. Fercassi?
Available land.
Available land. All right, any other strengths before we move on to the next topic?
Code enforcement, but I know that's part of, I think, there's.
Okay? We, we can put it down. We'll, we'll combine similar items when we, when we pull others into the air.
Because I actually have, and I don't know how this could be handled, I have code enforcement for all of these.
And again, that's, that's, um, that's certainly allowable. We could, your strengths and weaknesses. All right, any last comments on strengths before we go to the next topic?
Can we put back the legislation?
Parks and rent?
Yeah.
About open space.
Okay? Open spaces? Great, great ways?
Natural, natural areas.
All right? Mr. Lance, did you have any more before we move on? Okay, all right. Okay, our next item will be, our next topic is weaknesses. And again, I'd like to go around the room and get at least one from each, uh, elected official at the table, and then we'll open it up for general discussion. Um, Mr. Cyberg?
Um, I would have to say that our city tends to blow up the sidewalks at night.
Okay, lack of night, nightlife?
Yeah.
Okay? Mr. Charette?
Sometimes we don't articulate things as clearly as, as we could and cause some confusion in, in, in voting.
Okay, better communication?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Ward?
Uh, tax base issues.
Tax base issues? All right, Mr. Lance?
Archaic codes and restrictions on development.
Okay? Archaic codes and restrictions on development. Madam Mayor?
Yep, hold on. Archaic codes.
All right. Tax base, tax base, Ms. Ward?
Yeah.
Deteriorating roads faster than our revenue can repair.
Okay, deteriorating roads faster than our revenue can repair. Mr. Frazier?
No downtown.
No downtown. We'll let Mr. Spence get caught up here. Mr. Moss?
Lack of chain restaurants and regional shopping.
Ms. Banks?
Um, I'm deteriorating sidewalks and bike paths, which are very dangerous.
Okay, deteriorating sidewalks and bike paths? Deteriorating sidewalks and bike paths.
Well, location is a strength and Southfield is a weakness.
Okay. Our location proximity to.
proximity to Eight Mile.
To Eight Mile or Detroit. Heard that before. Ms. Jordan?
Our borders are gateway from the various communities. There's no distinction that you're in Southfield.
Okay. Late, lack of gateway identity. We'll clean that up. Mr. Fercassi?
Regional transportation.
Okay. Our lack of regional transportation. All right. Now I'd like to open it up. Mr. Lance?
Substandard performance by students in Southfield School.
Okay. Substandard performance of students in Southfield Schools. Ms. Jordan?
Erosion and deterioration in some neighborhoods.
Okay. Erosion and deterioration in some neighborhoods. Let him get caught up. And then Mr. Moss next. Erosion and deterioration of some neighborhoods. And Mr. Moss? Population law. Population law. Mr. Frazier?
Loss of our city staff.
Okay. Loss of city staff. Ms. Seymour? Four closed homes. Mr. Lance?
Four council decisions.
All right. Four council decisions. Mr. Syver?
Rise of too many rental homes.
All right. Increase of rental homes. Madam Mayor?
Well, our diversity is a strength and is sometimes a weakness for us.
Okay. Mr. Fercassi? All right. Mr. Frazier?
Marketing of our attributes.
Just let Mr. Spence get caught up, and then we have Mr. Moss and Mr..
Mr. Moss? Yeah. Regional reputation in terms of Metro Detroit and in terms of Michigan as a whole.
Okay. Regional reputation. Ms. Jordan?
The limited amount of grocery stores within the city.
Okay. Limited amount of grocery stores within the city. Mr. Lance?
Sign ordinances or contrary to common.
Okay. Our restrictions and our sign ordinances. Anyone else on weaknesses? Ms. Banks?
A lot of phrases, but getting the word out that we are a great city and we are not like some of the rural communities that border Southfield.
Okay. Marketing, public image. Positive image. Ms. Jordan?
No draw to the city during.
Okay. Lack of draw to the city.
No social life.
No social life. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, I had down, the social activities after 5:00 p.m. and subset with theaters, family restaurants, and sports activities.
Okay. Lack of nightlife?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I put down Northland.
Okay. Northland Mall, the weakness. Mr. Lance?
Check cashing and payday loan locations.
Okay. Check cashing. Alternative financial services. We'll just write AFS. Understand that? Okay. Any last? Mr. Charette, you look like.
Yes. Sometimes we don't play enough offense. We're very good on defense.
Okay. But we need to be more proactive.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else on weaknesses before we move on to opportunities? Mr. Lance?
The economic results that needed.
Okay. Mr. Fercassi, did you have something? Okay. Ms. Ward? All right. Ms. Banks?
I don't think we brag enough about the wonderful things that we do in Southfield.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Jordan?
I was going to say sometimes we're a little, maybe both that, complaining decently and often. We don't sometimes take advantage of opportunities that are available to us.
Okay.
We don't explore them a little bit more.
Okay.
We don't want to take risks.
Okay. Need to take advantage of opportunities. Take calculated risks. Okay. Mr. Fercassi?
Marketing the pavilion.
Okay.
The oldest crane's been buried in the first twenty-five.
All right. Marketing pavilion. Mr. Moss?
Some degrees, we're almost invisible on the map. You know, we're not kind of a go-to place in terms of that.
Okay. We get overlooked. Mr. Syver?
I think we have a great opportunity with the Southfield Sun, and I don't think that we use it enough. That paper will publish virtually anything you give it because they are short, it's a one reporter paper. So they're very receptive to community good news. And lately, it's been filled with a lot of police blotter stuff that I think could have been edged out if we put more positive stories.
Okay. So I'll just summarize this. We need to be more proactive with the Southfield Sun.
Everybody gets the paper.
Mr. Lance?
Well. It may be good for one, number one, but number two, they don't investigate anything. They print anything you give them. No investigation.
And that's what I'm saying, it's an opportunity.
We're not on either.
Well, we're not on opportunities yet. We're going to move to that next. Any last? Mr. Frazier, last comments on weaknesses?
I would love to write, our city administration, our staff, they don't have the succession plan.
Okay. Lack of succession from the city staff. Any last comments on weaknesses? Okay. We'll just give Mr. Spence a minute, and we'll move on to opportunities. Okay. Again, we're going to go around the room. We'll start on this side with Ms. Banks, as far as everyone contributed at least one
Opportunity, I think we need to sell the city more, not only, I mean.
Okay. Opportunity to sell the city with local media?
Um, you know, the expensive local media.
Okay. Ms. Seymour?
I think we're all going to say the same thing, but I'm going to just say tooting our own horn.
Okay. We need to toot our own horn. Ms. Jordan?
We have a potential growth in redevelopment with the city in terms of.
Okay. City center? Mr. Fercassi?
Partnerships with LTU.
Okay. Partnerships with LTU. Mr. Syver?
I'm still on my media thing. With the Southfield and Eccentric, we have a real willingness to cover Southfield. The paper seems to focus on Southfield and Royal Oak more than some of the smaller communities. And Ms. Armbruster is always at our meeting. Obviously, the difference in the paper is that one nails every home and it's free, the other you have to go to a library, so online.
Okay. So work more with our local newspapers.
Right. They're both papers.
Right.
They're willing to cover us.
Okay. Mr. Charette?
Yes, we have opportunities for more collaboration with other units of government. One of the outstanding examples is Mr. Witkowski got with some county and state officials to help with our roads. There are areas that we couldn't get cleaned up because of safety of our staff, and we have now gotten cooperation where the other entities will help set up those safeguards that are necessary.
Okay.
Just to be able to get to some areas that the so-called wind tunnels that would, you know, get cluttered and littered after the, you know, snow bells. So that's an outstanding, you know, recent example.
If I could summarize, collaboration with local municipalities, regional county and state government. Okay. Ms. Ward?
Probably some type of opportunity to work with between province and city and OCC for medical and biomedical.
Okay.
New developments and expanding that sector.
We talked about meds and ends, so opportunity to partner with Providence Hospital, OCC, in the biomedical engineering field. I'm going to go around once first. Mr. Lance?
There are no opportunities because people were chased away by flawed decisions of council, meaning Walmart.
Oh, okay. So I'll just rephrase that, that there's opportunities for retail development. I'm trying to phrase it in an opportunity. Well, you could put that, you could put that under a threat if you'd like. Okay. We'll get back to you. Madam Mayor?
Yes, I think the DBA is an amazing opportunity for us. Every elected official knows that that's our most challenged area, and we need to embrace it as an opportunity instead of a negative.
Okay. Mr. Frazier?
Establish or re-energize homeowner associations.
Okay. Our homeowner associations. All right. Mr. Moss?
Our daytime population.
Our daytime population.
Trying to convert that into a residency or nighttime population.
Okay. Mr. Syver?
We've always had a great relationship with LTU. However, it's not however, it's getting better now. The new president of LTU really wants to strengthen the town and gown relationship, and we think that's a wonderful opportunity. We don't have to go begging. They're reaching out to us.
Okay. So we'll put town and gown. We recognize LTU and OCC, but we, as we've mentioned, we have other universities, so it'll be broad.
And there are other projects specifically with LTU.
Right.
So that's why I'm singling them.
Okay. We'll mention LTU. LTU partnership, and then just towns and gowns, Jeff, if you don't mind. Mr. Moss?
Yeah. The trend away from sprawl, so that people are kind of coming back to the core suburb, older suburbs.
Okay.
Be a rent-a-not city.
Okay. I'm going to just phrase it inbound migration, and we'll monetize. Mr. Syver?
We have an opportunity by, with vacant space due to overparked buildings. When I look around, it's way too much parking.
Okay.
So opportunities with our vacant space and also looking at our parking standards.
Right. Ms. Jordan?
We have an opportunity, I believe, to start charging for parking.
Okay.
City hall campus.
All right.
It's one.
Okay. Parking fees in the city hall, municipal complex. Mr. Fercassi?
School of pharmacy and room to grow.
School of pharmacy and room to grow. Ms. Seymour? School of pharmacy and room to grow. Okay. I didn't know if you had your hand up. Mr. Lance?
I'm more aggressive on economic development.
Okay. Economic development opportunities. Mr. Frazier?
Educate our new residents in Southfield expectations and activities opportunities.
Okay. Educate, education campaign with new residents. Ms. Banks?
I think we need to reach out more to work to the young adults on the wonderful affordable housing that we have in our community.
Okay. We'll say we have the opportunity to reach out to young professionals, young adults. We also need to market our affordable housing. Our front lawn. Okay? Our front lawn? Mr. Lance?
Promote university high school and show that there is hope.
Okay. Promote university high school. And their successes. Mr. Moss?
Central Park Boulevard. I always think that is an opportunity that we could have street festival or a street fair or have some thing going on there.
Okay. So we got Central Park Boulevard.
Civic Center drive.
And Civic Center is our infrastructure opportunity, and then more special events.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
This goes back to bringing the community together. I see an opportunity to make our residents, to allow them to be more involved and to engage them more.
Okay. Engage our citizens and residents?
For marketing.
For marketing purposes. Mr. Moss?
I'd answer that. I'd say we need to engage our already engaged residents. You know, we had a, we had a lot of people who are interested in the future of the city, and we need a better partner and better director.
About harness our creative class. I had Mr. Lance and Mr. Charette.
Create the same standards elementary level with restrictions on entry and required for ample involvement.
Okay. So we have an opportunity to get the parents more involved in our students' well-being. Mr. Charette?
Demonstration projects and infrastructure.
Okay.
We need to have a fit and finish and to be able to celebrate like we did with the bridge reopening that we had reconstruction.
Mr. Longberg?
Opportunity right now with low interest rates to fix our road to lunch.
Okay. We're just letting Jeff get caught up. Okay. Mr. Longberg?
Opportunity to fix our roads with low interest rates.
Okay. Low interest rates and the ability to do bond financing for road repair. Is that?
Also, another thing would be collaboration with more of our leaders, um, cities around the extreme line operations.
All right. We did talk about collaboration, but we certainly could put streamline services. All right. Anybody else on opportunities? Any last comments on opportunities? Okay. We'll go to threats in a second. Okay. Ms., we'll start with Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I'll say Detroit for two reasons. In terms of its reputation and our proximity to it as a negative for Detroit, but also in terms of their downtown development, you know, we're losing out on certain projects that people find a certain appeal to Detroit.
Okay. So we've heard this before. Our proximity to Detroit is a threat. Also, the private reinvest, private public reinvestment in downtown Detroit is also a threat. Yeah. Mr. Frazier?
Foreclosures and empty homes.
Okay. Foreclosures and empty homes. Madam Mayor? Could we run the room first?
The perception of crime.
Okay. Next one is perception of crime. Mr. Lance.
Rising petty crime rate in drug houses will cause neighborhood deterioration.
Okay, rising crime and deterioration of our neighborhoods. All right. This word.
Probably the way that businesses operate now, that they don't seem to use or need as much office space.
Okay. Okay, um, we've been using the term new economy and that touches upon the, less of a need for office space and also talks about telecommuting and a whole host of how the new economy is changing. Mr. Shret.
Jobs, good paying jobs, lack of them.
Okay.
And the fact that the city's unemployment rate has been trending above the state unemployment rate, which by the way, even though there is improvement, it's number forty-two of fifty states.
Okay, lack of jobs, high paying jobs, and also the city's unemployment rate versus state and national averages. That quantifies it?
Yes.
Mr. Seiger.
Negativism instead of positive outlook on, you know, having a can-do spirit rather than we tried it, it didn't work.
Okay.
It's not good.
Okay, negative attitudes.
Right.
Versus can-do attitude. Okay, Mr. Fracassi.
Zip codes and census info.
Okay, zip codes and census data.
One more, maintenance of existing businesses.
Okay, lack of maintenance of existing businesses.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Loenberg.
Commercial value deterioration.
Okay, commercial value deterioration. We're gonna finish going around the room and then we'll open it up. Ms. Jordan.
We're gonna have to explain this one a little bit. Because of the influx of individuals moving from Detroit with their pit bulls, I believe that it's a threat to our community and to our neighborhoods and the safety of our neighborhoods.
Okay, influx of dangerous pets.
Pit bulls.
Pit bulls in particular. Okay, we're gonna go around the room first and then we'll open it up. Ms. Seymour.
The condition of Northland.
Okay, condition of Northland.
And, um, I would, I wouldn't say this a different way, the office buildings, many of them are, have been pirated out of here by cheaper rates in Troy and other places. It's not all just loss of business.
Right.
It's been, this has been going on for years.
Okay.
Pirating our office.
Pirating of tenants.
Yes, office tenants, business tenants.
Heard it, musical chairs in our office.
Boating.
Boating.
Boating is a good word.
Boating's another word. All right, Ms. Banks.
Loss of restaurants in our community.
Okay, loss of restaurants in our community. Okay, Mr. Fracassi.
Lack of major chains.
Okay, lack of major chains. Mr. Moss. New trends in housing. All right, new trends in housing. Mr. Frazier.
Bad roads.
All right, we'll let Mr. Spence get caught up here.
Um, new trends in housing.
And then, bad roads or deteriorating roads. Mr. Lance.
Increased gun crimes and ownership.
Okay, increased gun crimes and ownership. Madam Mayor, did you have your hand up? Ms. Jordan.
Working with less staff, I feel wanting to keep the same level of city services.
Okay, level of city services versus staffing levels. Mr. Loenberg.
Aging sewer infrastructure.
Okay, our aging sewer infrastructure. Level of city services versus level of staffing. Lack of sewer infrastructure.
I think it was aging sewer structure.
Aging sewer, aging sewer infrastructure. Oh, Mr. Moss is next.
Yeah, I would say ignorance or assumptions about Southfield by those who don't live in Southfield.
All right, ignorance or assumptions of Southfield from people outside of Southfield.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, well, perception of image outside.
Okay, perception of image. And then we'll go to Mr. Seiger.
Growth of charter school enrollment.
Okay, we're gonna let Mr. Spence get caught up and then I'll go Mr. Fracassi. Growth of charter school enrollment. Okay, Mr. Fracassi.
News media, it can be a positive, but it also can be a negative.
All right, the news media can be a threat. Mr. Lance.
Literary in streets and apartment complexes.
Mr. Loenberg.
Aging population.
Okay, aging population. And we have Ms. Jordan.
Well, citizen, our citizen input is important. It's a threat to have a few citizens trying to drive the elected officials.
Okay, so can I paraphrase it as vocal minority or do you not want to paraphrase?
Yeah, that's what we find.
Ms. Banks.
Affordable transportation for our aging population and those that are handicapped within our community.
Okay, so lack of affordable transportation. Madam Mayor.
The lack of civil discourse among our elected officials.
Okay, lack of civil discourse among elected officials. Mr. Frazier.
The number of nonprofits that use our services would don't benefit.
Okay. Number of nonprofits that use city services. Ms. Jordan.
I'd say code enforcement.
Okay, code enforcement, staffing. Mr. Shret.
Stereotypes and prejudice.
Mr. Lance.
Be development friendly, change restrictions.
Okay, lack of development friendly regulations. Any last comments on, Ms. Jordan.
I'll just make one last comment, and it's with the visionary leadership for the future, not making decisions for the now.
Okay, lack of future vision. Any last comments on threats? Okay, so we got a lot of, generated a lot of ideas and we'll take a moment and then Okay, again, what, I'd like to ask, does everyone contribute at least one idea, we'll go around the table, and then if there's anything that hasn't been said, we'll put that up there and then you'll be given an opportunity to vote on it. So we'll start with Mr. Fracassi this time. Okay, Mr. Seiger. So one priority.
We, I instructed kids to bring ten.
Right, but we'll have everyone contribute one and then whatever hasn't been said, we'll go around and you can contribute.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite sure.
Mr. Fracassi.
Tax base.
All right, tax base is a priority, increasing tax base.
My term would be succession planning.
Second priority would be succession planning, and again, these are in no particular order right now. Mr. Shret.
Fiscally stable, no emergency manager.
Okay, being fiscally stable with no emergency, um, this word.
Fill the office space.
I'm sorry.
Fill the office space.
Okay, fill office space. Mr. Lance.
Keep tax rate competitive, disciplined spending.
Okay, competitive tax rate and disciplined spending. Madam Mayor.
An organizational structure that can be supported by our tax revenue.
Okay, org structure supported by tax revenue. Mr. Frazier.
Improve the infrastructure, especially roads.
Okay, improve our infrastructure, especially roads. Improve our infrastructure, especially roads. Okay, Mr. Moss.
City center and helping it become development ready.
Okay, city center, becoming development ready. And Ms. Banks.
I know this is on the infrastructure, but again, sidewalks and bike paths.
Okay.
They're ironed there.
Sidewalks and bike paths. And Ms. Seymour.
Okay, if we have that up there, that's okay.
All right, Ms. Jordan.
Clean, safe city.
Clean, safe city. Mr. Loenberg.
I was gonna say, you gotta vote, that's my priority right now.
Okay, again, you'll be given an opportunity to actually vote on what is your preference. But we've gone around the room, Mr. Moss.
Yeah, I think expanding roads because we have to be ready by a certain date on the Boulevard, Southfield Road, and we have to be ready on a certain date for a plan for Evergreen Road, so those two.
Okay, so Evergreen Road and Southfield Roads. Okay, we'll get, we'll get to that. Okay, local roads. Then we have Mr. Fracassi.
Rental inspection program.
Okay, rental inspection program. Madam Mayor.
A plan to generate new revenue.
Okay, a plan to generate new revenue. Mr. Lance.
Increased economic development focus.
Okay, increase ED focus. Mr. Seiger. Oh, hold on a second, increase economic development focus or ED focus. Mr. Seiger.
Placing an emphasis on public art as an economic driver.
Okay, emphasis on public art. And we have Mr. Frazier and Mr. Moss.
Attract high-profile restaurants.
And Mr. Moss.
Marketing.
Marketing? Mr. Lance.
This is my last one, and with due respect to the assessing department, outsource assessing department to Oakland County.
Okay, outsource assessing. Target to Oakland County. All right, any other priorities that we haven't mentioned so far? Madam Mayor.
We must embrace the DDA area, Northland area, as a top priority.
Okay, reinvestment in DDA Northland area. And we have Ms. Jordan.
I'm, I'm gonna again say we need to add the gateway.
Gateway.
Gateways around the city.
Okay.
So that you can see the distinction.
And Mr. Seiger and Mr. Frazier.
I don't know if this is, sometimes we're saying the same thing and it's just expressed differently, but I'm talking about economic development, but I'm also, we've gotta emphasize alternative sources of revenue.
Okay, alternative sources of revenue.
Right.
When we combined, when we compiled these, anything that's similar with, even if they get voted separately, we'll categorize them. I think, Mr. Frazier.
Yes, work with the real estate community to actively market our vacant homes.
Actively market vacant homes. I think I had a hand over here, Mr. Fracassi.
Do you have the city spinner on there?
Yes.
Can we have LPU on here?
No, not yet.
I'd like to add.
Okay, LPU, partnership with LPU. Greater partnerships with LPU. Okay, Mr. Moss.
Promoting, marketing, city events, things that go on in the city that we can promote, parks and recs event.
All right, better promotion of city events. Madam Mayor.
A higher emphasis on the, um, young people that live in our city we're trying to attract. And I'm not talking about the young families, I'm talking about that single person that we want to attract to live in Southfield.
Okay, better attraction of young professionals.
Yeah.
Mr. Frazier, class. Mr. Loenberg.
Coordinate the business leaders and the developers of the city to sit together at a roundtable to be able to promote and figure out how we can improve things specifically.
Okay, how about better public-private partnerships? And then we'll expand, Ms. Seymour.
And we need better use of our ice arena.
All right, any last comments on priorities before we vote? We got a couple, Mr. Moss.
Code enforcement on there, even though it may be a priority, you could put it as a priority.
Promote ice arena better and then code enforcement.
Can we add, can I add rename ice arena to Jones, Ice Arena State.
Okay, well, one in parentheses, the rename.
Rename it.
Rename Ice Arena. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back to that in a second, I know Mr. Shret has had his hand up.
Yes, this might be a subtopic under code enforcement, light avoidance strategy for un-aging apartments.
Okay, light avoid, avoidance strategy. And then just, just before I go, Madam Mayor, I'm Ms. Jordan. Can I ask that maybe you wanna broaden that to corporate naming and not just limited to investigate corporate naming?
That's what I mean, corporate naming.
Again, it could be for parks or ball fields or ice arena.
And partnerships.
Yeah, and that falls into that, looking for alternative revenue streams. Okay, Madam Mayor.
I just wanted to just add some emphasis to our housing stock protection in all categories must be protected and that area of our rentals and those older apartment buildings in the southern part of the state.
Protect housing.
Yeah, that has to be a priority, or else we're gonna have slums in our city.
Oh, Mr. Frazier.
Adequate range, staff to exceed customer expectations.
The first word was adequate?
Yes, train.
Trained staff.
To exceed customer expectations.
Okay, adequate trained staff to exceed customer expectations. Mr. Loenberg.
Creating a regional library network where we could be one of the hubs of that, because all these little cities have little tiny libraries, it ends up all coming to our library.
Okay, creating a regional library network. Okay, Mr. Fracassi.
Did it maintain a strong, decent fire on that?
Okay, um, maintain strong public safety. All right, I'm gonna ask for any last priorities that haven't been mentioned. Okay, Mr. Frazier.
This is gonna probably fall off. This is gonna probably fall off of us when we start voting, but, uh, we have a lot of city properties, and I don't know what our long-term range plans are for those.
Okay, a strategy for selling or developing CDO property?
Yes.
Orphaned properties? Okay, belongs on the list, remind ourselves. All right, a strategy for orphaned properties. And again, this is just shorthand, we'll expand on this as we, appreciate, uh, Mr. Spence here, he's probably got writer's cramp by now. Mrs., Madam Mayor.
I just have to add this, we must make ourselves a business-ready city.
Okay.
And that is when we restructure to be able to sustain ourselves with our tax base, everyone in their position must know it's not about their job, it's about us doing all the things that we do, business-ready.
Okay, business-ready community. Mr. Moss.
Yeah, um, I think 12 Mile Southfield Road, that thing, should be somewhat of a priority for two reasons. Number one, to get something there that works, and number two, so that we can move past it and lift morale and stop talking about it and move on.
Okay, Mr. Fracassi.
Sustainable city.
Okay, sustainable city. All right, if I, if I may, if we're all done with our priorities. Everybody at the table will be given five blue dots and one red dot. And this is the, uh, this is, again, to help try to focus some priority on anything that's been said tonight, whether it's on the top 10 list, or it's an item that has been discussed, under strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Uh, it's always difficult to narrow down your priorities, but this is an exercise that helps focus that. You, uh, each member will be given five dots. You can put one dot on five different items, you can put five dots on one item, or break it up any way you want. You've also been given one red dot, you do not need to use the red dot, but if there's one issue that's been discussed tonight that you just can't live with, you can put the red dot up there. Can't live with. So if someone says, if, if somebody says paint all our roads in gilded gold, and you say that's ridiculous, you would use that red dot, and then we're gonna ask, um, for an explanation of the red dot if anyone does place it. Many times it's either a misunderstanding, or it's a double negative, okay? So again, um, I'm gonna, we're gonna pass this around and ask through the council president that we give about five minutes for the dots to be placed up there. And any, um, any item that's been repeated, we'll combine them when we tally all the votes. Then the next step is at a future meeting to come back, review the priorities, and hopefully use this as you start your budgeting process and other priorities for the city. Again, it's not the end-all, be-all, but it helps, we've got a lot of great ideas that were generated. Uh, once you've voted, or if you have a few minutes, we also have I Wish Southfield board up there, and there's some sticky pads and some pens, and so, Ms. Spinks, if I can use your example, I wish Southfield had better sidewalks or pathways, you would write that little note and stick it on I Wish Southfield board, okay? Or I wish Southfield didn't, or I wish Southfield expanded. So you are, be given each, um, your dots to go up there and vote, and then in the meantime, if you want, you can make some additional comments on the board, I Wish Southfield, dot, dot, dot. And then I'll, I'll turn it back over to council president after we've voted. Mr. Seiger.
Sorry, I'm a little confused, because some of these, um, I think we're missing a step, and just in my opinion. Some of them are very close, and, um, I think there needs to be some combining before we vote, um...
Well, if I could ask, we will combine the things that are similar, just so that we can get some consensus tonight. We'll come back with similar ideas, so if there's three votes on one and two on another that are similar, it'll score as a five. And again, uh, this is just the beginning, and we'll come back with a follow-up. But instead of bogging down on trying to figure that out, again, I would just ask the council to, and elected officials, just to vote on their priorities.
I just wanted to be clear how you were.
Ms. Seymour.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that, if you're gonna do that, if you're gonna take the two and the three that are similar, say so, and then pick that up. And let us see what the, don't just combine and make it count.
I think, we'll show you the two separate as they're written.
Just going to quickly summarize, um, what some of the top vote-getters are, and then we'll break it down and bring it back at a future meeting. Increasing or strengthening tax base receives two votes. Succession planning receives two votes. Filling up our vacant office space receives three votes. Improving the infrastructure, especially roads, receives one. Developing the city center receives five votes, which is one of our top priorities. Having a clean, safe city receives one vote. Rental inspection program receives one vote. Increased economic development focus receives one vote. Public art emphasis receives three votes. Marketing the city, uh, receives five votes. Outsource assessing department to Oakland County receives two positive votes and two can't-live-with votes. So I'm gonna ask who placed the red dot on that item. Okay, Madam Mayor, do you want to just explain your, your reasoning?
When I say that the top priorities are what we need to do, sending that message to the administration is something that we need to look at, not necessarily outsourcing it, so we, it's not a top priority.
Okay, well, there's another red vote on that, uh, Ms. Jordan.
I didn't think it would be a top priority at this time.
Okay, that's why we have that, thank you. All right, embracing the DDA Northland receives one vote. Improving our gateways into the city receives three votes. Alternative sources of revenue, working on that, receives two votes. Partnering with Lawrence Pack receives two votes. Code enforcement, light avoidance strategy receives one vote. Protecting housing stocks receives one vote. Creating a regional library receives two red votes, and who voted on those? Okay, you want to explain?
Um, we already have a regional library, and we're in the consortium with, so that wouldn't be a priority if we already have.
Okay, Mr. Fracassi. All right, maintaining strong public safety receives one vote, and having a sustainable city receives three votes. Um, again, a lot of great ideas, nothing's cast in stone, we'll tabulate these. Um, we actually will break this down into percentage of overall votes, uh, to see where those priorities shake out. We'll also type up all the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, um, as kind of a working guide for city staff. And then we'll have a follow-up meeting with city council. Items that weren't discussed or are thought of later can be added. Mr. Fracassi.
Yeah, there was a question on, on city center, and it, and it kind of hit into the tax base and revenue. If those are things that are similar in nature, would you build something for those purposes to make revenue whatever? How do you classify those that would be a federal result?
Well, what we'll do is, we'll, we will, based on our comments, and Mr. Trent and myself, and Mr. Spence, and Ms. Spinks, will work on putting together similar items, and then you'll flush it out and say yes or no. Um, but we'll give it our first pass. Also, I just want to remind, um, the elected officials, we have this board here, I Wish Southfield, if you wanna contribute some comments. I promise to keep this about an hour and a half, which we're right on track. So if there are now further questions, I want to thank everybody, you've got a lot of great ideas. Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that there are some items up there that got five votes or four votes, or some of those. I think we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't take very seriously everything that's up there. Because, just because they didn't get a lot of votes, doesn't mean that they're not really important in making the whole thing work.
I agree, and, and when we tabulate, all the priorities get listed. They just get listed with a little less emphasis, just as a starting point.
Yeah, one other thing, and I'm just gonna say this, the roads, the, didn't get very many votes, so if we have terrible roads, how are they gonna get to the city center?
And again, that's for further discussion.
All right, the next step on our agenda is the annual transmittal of the budget by the mayor.
Council, the, um, the act of translating the budget becomes more surreal to me, and we amazingly continue to sustain our government with less funds, and we do it amazingly well. I will be presenting to you, uh, the budget. There's just a couple of things I wanted to say, in keeping with our strategic plan, the 2014 fiscal year budget has been balanced without the use of fund balance for operations. This must remain a priority in our financial planning. We cannot afford to rely on fund reserves for operating costs while we're faced with increasing issues with the roads and other infrastructure. It's also imperative that we seek new ways to cut costs and increase revenues while maintaining a constant focus on tax payers. Forgive me, I have a cold. But, um, council, we all know the story because you look at the budget all the time. Done. But it is, this year you're gonna have some challenges because of our infrastructure. It's essential that we address our capital project needs in order to maintain our infrastructure. You'll see in my letter that I present to you that this budget is in sync with my strong conviction that public safety remains a top priority, we cannot skip. We had on our list a safe and clean city, so code enforcement and police safety will remain in this budget a high priority, and I hope that the council, when they look at it for approval, will maintain that. Our roads and our water and our facilities, we cannot expect a full economy, economic recovery on the state or local side with our prominent roads. So with that being in mind, I am energized to see that the funding allowed for the infrastructure investments in this budget, budget, is over $9.7 million, and is earmarked for 19 infrastructure improvement projects for 2013. However, we know there are limits to our organization to sustain even more staff cuts and concessions using the same methodology that we have been using. Therefore, I continue to urge, as I have in the past, and I said this now in three letters, that the development of a more strategic organizational approach for the long haul. If outside assistance will be required in this regard, I would support such an engagement. We must develop a sustainable, long-term organizational structure for the future of Southfield in line with our current revenue. And as I said tonight, we need a structure without asking people there that have titles, that we need to consolidate departments, we need to consolidate them. Everyone in our department and our staff should know their role, and we should be able to sustain that structure with our existing revenue. So I will pass this out, and I look forward to working with the council as I always have, and as we move Southfield forward.
I'd like to say we're all done with the budget. That, our next step is that we do the charts and graphs, and that there will be an executive summary of the budget that takes the information that the mayor has, her letter, my letter, and the other detail, and then we, of course, analyze it, and so that the mayor and council have more detail. Uh, but this, this needs the charter requirements of the process at this point, thank you. The next, thank you again, Mayor Lawrence. Um, I also want to thank the staff for being here this evening, and, um, I hope that you, uh, heard what council has to say, there'll be more, um, priorities, obviously. Uh, moving on to communications, um, the first person to have to be recognized tonight is Pamela Gerald. Uh, Ms. Gerald is not in attendance, but the records show, uh, note that she's not here. Uh, the second person who has to be recognized this evening is Richard Meltzer, Mr. Meltzer. If you'd like to use, uh, that microphone there, you're welcome to sit there and direct the council on that microphone, um, that way we can see you better. Can you hear me okay? And you may begin.
Okay, thank you, a very interesting session from that, and I was able to do a very good presentation. I'm here again to name and dress the ones, Richard Meltzer, 20850, Lincoln, Southfield. I'm here again to talk about Inglewood Park and tree mine council, that we dealt with this issue five years ago. At that time, residents who lived close to the park made it clear that they did not want the park turned into softball city. Council supported the homeowners and rejected the idea of installing artificial lights for late-night ball games. It now appears there are forces that are again trying to turn the park into softball city, this without any notice to or involvement of local residents, and contrary to the instruction coming out of the September 15th, 2008 council meeting and captured in those minutes. And to date, Mr. Block of our Parks and Rec Department has not responded to our request for a meeting. Recently, I've talked with Mr. Fracassi a couple of times, a bit contentiously, but later more cordially. We both care about the city, but, and I say this with respectfully, he still bemoans the laws of the Brother Rice Park investment in 2008, as if the debate had to do with the very existence of Inglewood Park itself. At that 2008 meeting, councilman Seiger referred to the need for a philosophical understanding about the purpose of the park, and that's a key point. So it's important to understand that Inglewood is really a neighborhood park with homes bordering it. After we rejected Brother Rice in 2008, so did Birmingham in 2010 for similar reasons. Quoting a February 29th, 2010 article in the CNG Community Newspaper, "The school sought to get property for the field in Birmingham but was unsuccessful. Residents adjacent to the parcel in question had concerns about lighting and loudspeakers in the proposed field." And there is a reference to the future in that article, quote, "Plans call for a ball field on the south side of Equity Drive on a five-acre vacant field on a dead-end street in the Light Industrial District," unquote. And a recent April 2nd, 2013 article at MLive described Brother Rice's new field and provided the address, quote, "Located at 1525 Equity Drive, next to the..." Drive next to the Oakland-Troy Airport," unquote. It's next to an airport. It's zoned light industrial. Its neighbors include Myers Thrifty Acres. Need I say more? After dark activity brings late, late night noise, vendor activity, disruptive behavior, especially from teens, light pollution and traffic. Even now, there are problems in the park. People hang out there sometimes overnight and have been seen wandering in adjacent neighborhoods, including across 12 Mile. Sometimes there are people playing loud music over there halfway through the night. You heard recently about vendors frying fish and dumping their grease into our sewers. And there was the leak thrown out of Flat Rock that wanted to play at Inglewood. This is just a sampling. And this takes us to property values. In a city that has many, many homes for sale, any undesirable factor, even a small one, can cause a prospective buyer to look elsewhere. And non-residents in the park are not just occasional. Many of the ball players do not live or work here, and I frequently ask people at the kids' play escape where they come from, and very often, they are not from Southfield either. So I think we should be cautious about asking our neighbors to sacrifice for the benefit of non-residents. Proponents of softball city make assertions that are often based on misinformation, marginally relevant examples, and wishful thinking, while trivializing real concerns of local residents. They have conducted no impact study, done no market research. And if revenue generation is the real, though unstated goal, there are other strategies that can be developed, but with the involvement of the local residents. Time is limited, so I'd like to conclude by asking the chair to respond to a couple of short questions. One, does the issue of installation of lights have to go before the council for approval? Two, will the city meet with us? We have been trying to get a meeting with Mr. Block of Parks and Rec without success. And three, can we get the no softball city park issue on the council agenda so residents can turn out? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meltzer. This does not come to council. It's before the Parks and Rec Board, and my understanding of, and recently, prior to tonight's meeting, talking to Mr. Charette, their country day has no money. And, um, it's, I, I appreciate where you're coming from, but this is not a council item at this time.
Okay, what?
But it will be, should, should it, it advance to that, but it has not advanced here. Well, it's not, it's, it's, honestly, and, and all due respect to you, I, you know, we've talked about this and recently you emailed me, um, we, we are not discussing this now, I mean, because it's not before us. But your opinion is valued. Um, and, and I know you're, you're telling us, um, you know, restating what happened in the past and what you don't want to see in the future. Uh, we will keep that in mind. Uh, and as I, I, I've always been, and I think I speak for everybody around the table, we are always interested in what residents have to say.
Okay, well, I do appreciate that. Um, I don't speak just for myself, I'm in communication with, with neighbors. And, um, we don't, you know, we didn't quite know how to approach this. Again, we weren't sure it was, it was a council item. So far, I'm hearing, no, it's not.
At this point, I would take it to the Parks and Rec Board, if you feel...
Well, we're trying. We're trying to arrange a sit-down so we can get a two-way conversation.
Mr. Block, you're here, he can tell you when the next Parks and Rec Board meeting is?
Mr. Block?
Okay. Okay. I look forward to it.
All right.
Um, with that, with that said, if country day was to raise the money and ultimately it got to be a question of approval, would approval have to come from council?
Yes.
Okay, that's important to know. I meant for your time.
That apparently is, at this point, a very remote.
Okay, well, we're hearing different things from different people.
Yeah, I understand, but my source is Mr. Charette.
The word, the word, the remote is appropriate.
Okay, okay. Um, Mr. Lance, want to say something? All right, um, we have no other communications, so then this part of the agenda, is anything that, um, council would like to add? Thank you, um, this evening. Are there any other items that come before the budget? Yep, Mr. Fraser?
I have two things. One is, we recently reconstructed the bridge down the beach road. And, uh, I know it was rough. It was noticed at the time we had the ribbon cutting. But, uh, I was by there again today. And there's a sidewalk there, there's no way to get to the sidewalk. The yard rail blocks anybody from getting to the side, to the, to the sidewalk here going north on, uh, on beach road. Because the, the yard rail runs, will all be on it. And, and there's a nice sidewalk and a, and a, you know, a perp up the bridge, adjacent to the automobile bridge. Just can't get to it.
We, we will be glad to have a field trip, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
And see what we can do about that.
Tim to the, uh, fire hydrant a little bit.
Thank you.
Uh, the second thing is, we got another letter about Bradford Academy, which seems to pop up again. Now, do you want to refer that to the neighborhood?
Through the chair, uh, our chief of police is, is, uh, Ann Colvin. We'll be meeting him with the folks from Bradford and going through the issues.
Okay. There seems to be a perpetual turnover of staff at that school, which is fairly typical of charge school. But, um, at any rate, uh, we can only feel for the resident on this one.
But there's, there's a periodic need to, to place, re-emphasize these issues. And it does show improvement, so we're just gonna have to stay on it.
Well, yes.
It's unfortunate, but...
Yes. Is there something that we can do to increase the pressure, similar to when we had folks that, that have nightclub and stuff that...
We, we are exploring those options.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else to come for, uh, the council this evening? Anybody else? If not, I will declare this meeting. Thank you. Again, thank you to staff for, uh, your time and ventures.